Our 12:45 having arrived and the city council having completed its business in closed session, we will resume our meeting, but the clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Trigaro?
Present.
Brunner?
Present.
Newsom?
Present.
Golda?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson?
Present.
And Mayor Keeley?
Here. A quorum having been established, we will proceed. We are on oral communication. For those of you that might be unfamiliar with it, this is the opportunity to address the city council on a matter under our jurisdiction, but not on today's agenda for a period of time not to exceed two minutes. And in the event that we have folks both here in the council chambers as well as online, we will toggle back and forth. We'll take someone here and we'll take somebody online, so on, back and forth. So let me see if there's anyone who wishes to address the council under oral communication. Please come forward. Good afternoon. Welcome to the city council.
Libero Call General Contractor. I spoke at Public Safety Committee meeting about fire, and I wish to speak about fire today. We've got a pretty good wind going on out there. I don't know if anybody noticed that when the LA fires were being fanned by Santa Ana winds, we had a pretty good onshore wind happening in our town. South of Laurel right now, let's just say, for example, has a thousand or a hundred points of ignition with the various small businesses and few people that live south of Laurel. By the time you pack that with high rises as your plan is, there will be a hundred times or maybe a thousand times more points of ignition in those buildings, whether it's smoking in bed or a pan of grease, or a car fire, what few cars you're allowing. I'd like to have this council take into account escape routes, because I don't see that. I see kowtowing to investors and builders and developers, but not thinking about what happens to the people that live in these buildings if there is a fire. Say the boardwalk catches on fire and it's blowing towards Delve Vega. It's going to take my house, it's going to take this building. Where are these people going to go? We talked about the front and Laurel Street development, and how are those people going to get out of town if they're confronted with a wall of fire? Fire escape is part of public safety, and I do not see this council addressing it.
Thank you very much. Do we have someone online, Ms. Bush? We'll take the person online, then we'll take the next person who's in the council chambers with us today. Person online, good afternoon. Welcome to the city council meeting.
Hey there, Bradley Snyder. Thank you, Fred. I can now see that you can hear me. Yeah, I agree with that gentleman who just spoke. I think the fire down in Palisades should kind of fall squarely on, you know, the blame for it should fall squarely on Brad Sherman, their congressional representative, and the governor, Gavin Newsom. You know, the fact that those fires, you know, they didn't have fire breaks, they didn't, they didn't, you know, they just, they just like kind of leaned on the excuse that, you know, if weather causes some fires, they can blame climate, and climate can be blamed on Trump. You know, it's kind of like Flintstone logic. Like after a while, it's like you're tired of watching the Simpsons episode of politicians blaming politicians. Many of you know I'm not a politician. One thing, I went to the event that, you know, you were for the, for the housing that you spoke at, Mayor Keeley, and, you know, in some ways, I feel like there's just a super saturation of housing, and I've said this many times, but I've been around. I lived about a block and a half from when they put that quote temporary unquote Warriors Arena in, and then started building just huge, huge buildings here, there, and everywhere. And after 89, you know, you saw that happen with redevelopment funds, and it's, it's, you know, at some point, you know, the local economy just simply can't, like people, there aren't enough jobs in this Santa Cruz economy of 250,000 people that live in the county. There aren't enough jobs. There isn't enough money for people to be able to afford these thousand units you've built, and you're doubling down. You want twice as many. So I'm dissatisfied with that, and I'm here to express it. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you so much. Next person in line. Good afternoon, Mr. Ewing. Good to see you again, sir. Welcome to the council meeting.
No, I appreciate that introduction. Yeah, my name is James Ewing Whitman. What can I not, and what can I and can I not comment on? Boy, the supervisors meeting was really quite fantastic. I really wanted to stay for their... Oh, there's something about the LGBTQ pedophile stuff that many people had commented on before, and it's quite daunting. At least that flag's not in this room yet. You know, funny things come up that I write. This came up from 13 years ago today. When the slaves were said to have been freed with the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation, something soulless was further defined. The corporation, "Am I the only one who struggles with the power that has been released by the soulless straw man?" And there's a quote from a Rush song. So it's really quite fascinating, the dialogue that came out publicly and with the "This affects everybody" with, that the county of Santa Cruz, their officials decided to talk about the day after, within 36 hours of the lithium ion battery fire. And then here, 10 days later, basically saying the same thing. So I was going to read something that was really quite mean. I've written it, it's published, but not just about the elected officials and most of the bureaucracy, but also about the citizens from my observations since 1996, living here. So I don't know really what to say. We are all in this together, and EPA does have several standards that are off by more than a factor of 10,000, and it'll just be interesting to see how these further things go. I'm looking forward to other shares, where hopefully I'll have three minutes on each subject to talk about. Hopefully.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Next person online. Do we have anyone else online?
No one with their hand raised.
Oh, good. Thank you. Welcome to the city council meeting. All right.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's Elle Johnson. I'm a shop steward for SEIU here at the city. I just wanted to take my time to thank you guys for holding today's meeting and to introduce some of our wharf workers and lifeguards who will be speaking to you today. I'm asking that you really take your comment, their comments into consideration for our upcoming bargaining cycles. Our SEIU contract is expiring this year, and I would ask you that you really take a look at how you can assist our staff and our community by making a commitment to infrastructure and investment in the people who uphold, maintain, and keep our people safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next person in line. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome to the council meeting again. Very well. Good to see you, sir.
My name is Ken Bear. I'm the City of Santa Cruz President of SEIU 521. I'm here today to address you particularly on natural disasters, the wharf being at the top of mind since it happened recently. But as, as you all know, we're disaster service workers, and that actually starts before the disaster happens. We're tasked with actually maintaining the infrastructure of the city of Santa Cruz, and we depend on your direction and our supervisor's direction to get that done, as well as financing. So when we have a situation at the wharf and something needs to be replaced, we need to have the workers and materials here in order to do that. When Laurel Creek overflowed its banks, we needed the streets workers here to actually take care of the channel like it should be. We need engineers for West Cliff Drive. We need lifeguards to pull the people out of the water that went in with, with the wharf. So it's very important that you provide us with enough people to maintain the infrastructure that's here and add to it so that we can resist climate change. It's well and good to say, well, we've decarbonized our buildings and we're switching to an electric fleet, but that's, that effect will be years and years down the road. Immediately, what we need to do is start harding our defenses against natural disasters. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon. How are the carpenters today?
We're doing well.
Good.
Uh, thank you for the time. My name is Brian Shields. I'm a fielder up with carpenters Local 646. We cover Santa Cruz County and Monterey County. I want to thank the entire board here for the time that you've given me and the, and the meetings and just going over what it is that it means to be a carpenter in this area, you know. Really, what we try to do is provide that opportunity for people to grow up here, stay here, invest here, live here, be here, all of those things. And so I just wanted to continue that conversation along a little bit with, with, you know, I know downtown expansion plan is a huge project, you know, and I know it's a plan, right? But I'd love to see some kind of encouragement towards using responsible general contractors, people who are invested in apprenticeship, people who are invested in healthcare, you know, prevailing wage ideally, but all of these things, and it starts lowering that delta between the non-union contractor and a union contractor, you know, because a non-union contractor, a lot of times, wouldn't even have to follow any kind of standard, because there's nobody there to enforce it. There's all kinds of rules out there, and we can read them all day long, but there's only two labor commissioners in the state of California, two or three labor commissioners in the state of California. So it becomes a problem of policing, right? If you only had two police officers in Santa Cruz County, you could have all the laws you want, you're not going to get much done, you know? And so, so encouragement, front-ending it, coming up with solutions early is, is super important, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else online, Ms. Bush? Good afternoon, sir. Welcome to the city council meeting.
Thank you. My name is James Turk Des, and I'm a roofing contractor in Santa Cruz, Turk the roofer. And I'm here to speak today about the increase in the fees for roofing permits. I've been roofing in Santa Cruz for 47 years. I've, you didn't need a, thank you, you didn't need a permit to roof in Santa Cruz until after the earthquake, but out-of-towners were taking advantage of the locals. And at that point, first the county, then the city started instituting having permits. It was to save, it was to protect the homeowner. I'm a mom and pop. I don't do commercial projects. My permits are over the counter, and so for an over-the-counter permit, the processing next door is between 10 and 20 minutes. That's with it in the computer and me out the door with the permit in hand. But there's two required inspections. One of them is either a tear-off inspection or an in-progress, and the second one is a final. There's no complication to this. It's all visual, so it's from the outside. Each one of those inspections takes between 10 and 20 minutes. If you figure there's an hour for the application, an hour for the first inspection, an hour for the second inspection, total expenditure for the, for the city is three hours. So in the old days, what would happen is, is the permit, of course, was based on valuation. So the last three permits that I've gotten, which are this year, the first one, the valuation was $17,820. Before January 1st, that would have cost about $280. It was $791.01 for the three hours of service. The second one I got was $28,275, which was, that permit was, again, for three hours, $1,349.01. And the third one I got was $38,665 valuation, and that permit fee was $3,000. And the county has over-the-counter permits that, that are like the permit that I'm talking about, where the valuation is based-
I'm going to ask you, take about another five or 10 seconds.
Okay.
Thank you.
Theirs is $518.15. And then additional buildings are another permit fee for a lower amount.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. For those of you who've not been at oral communication before, we, we don't engage essentially, but what does happen here is council members and myself hear this, so they can do with it what they will. So even though we, we are not allowed to respond, you may get a response.
My phone number's down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next person in line. Welcome. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Sorry, I'm going to read off my phone.
But all right.
Greetings, city council members. My name is Noah Nagel. I've been a lifeguard with the city of Santa Cruz for nine years and a member of the Marine Rescue Team for three. I'm here to discuss the need for change in the Marine Safety Division. Our system currently relies on temporary employees, all of whom work second jobs to step up in times of need. All four Marine Rescue Members who responded on jet skis the day the wharf collapsed volunteered to work that day. Performing the dangerous work we do without benefits, healthcare, or consistent salary is simply unsustainable. The city has a need for more full-time lifeguards to adequately staff and secure our coastline, ensuring the safety of the public and other city employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do for us and people of our community. Thank you. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
Armored Mayor, city council members, and distinguished guests. Good afternoon. My name is Nolan Mel. Today, I'm speaking as a member of the Wharf Construction Group, responsible for maintaining and preserving the Santa Cruz Municipal Wharf. The Wharf is a, Wharf Crew is a specialized team of skilled workers that are critical in keeping the wharf structurally sound and running smoothly. The tasks we perform are far from simple, and the qualifications we hold are elite. We operate cranes, semi-trucks and trailers, tractors, boats, scuba gear, power tools, and heavy machinery on a daily basis. We're a half mile out into the Pacific Ocean, constantly causing, constantly solving complex problems in that dynamic environment. Every day brings a new set of challenges, from unexpected structural issues to intricate engineered solutions, while adhering to the strictest safety protocols. This is no small feat. It requires a high level of skill, expertise, and a deep understanding of both construction and maritime work. Without the essential work of the Wharf Construction Crew, the Santa Cruz Municipal Wharf will fail. As a crew, we are highly trained professionals. I hold a U.S. Coast Guard's Captain License. I'm a crane operator, deep-water scuba certified, and have a Class A driver's license. These are just a few of the qualifications we possess to carry out the demanding work required on the Wharf Crew. Yet, despite the advanced skills we bring to the table, the significant demands of our job, we are currently 40% underpaid compared to industry standards for similar work. The Wharf Construction Crew has not had a comparable, comparable pay study or substantial raise in over 20 years. Our compensation does not reflect the level of expertise and skills required to do our job. I'm happy to be counsel. It's invaluable work the Wharf Crew does to consider a significant raise that aligns with the level of expertise, responsibility, and risk we carry every day. The Wharf Crew is entrusted with maintaining the safety and structural integrity of our beloved wharf. We are committed to making sure the wharf is here for future generations to enjoy. Please compensate us fairly. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for your comments, sir. Anyone else online? Anyone else in chambers wish to address us under oral communication? Please come forward. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome back.
Thank you. Members of the council, you know that Santa Cruz is a unique and special place, but you may not realize that the Santa Cruz, I'm sorry, San Lorenzo Point Park is an exceptional park on the whole coast of California, on the whole western coast of the United States. If California State Parks implement their simplistic and unimaginative plan, this park will be compromised forever, and full access for disabled people will never be possible. With their plan comes a five-foot fence, and people are going to go over that fence regardless and out to the point unsafe to themselves and also damaging to the photography. We, the Seabright Beach Neighborhood Association, have an architectural plan that fully meets ADA requirements. You have seen this plan, and it also allows future modification to provide ADA access to the point and a staircase to the beach. The state does not. And here's what's new. My people have pledged more than a million dollars to complete this visionary and remarkable change. Together with Santa Cruz residents, I want to see this little park properly transformed to show the full beauty and value of this unique coastal spot which overlooks the river mouth, Seabright Beach, the main beach, and the boardwalk. Please, please, I beg you to join with us and do this properly, offering full and safe access for everyone. Together, we can leave a lasting legacy for Santa Cruz, unique on this whole western coast. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Person on this. Thank you. Next person. Mr. Cole.
Glad. Thank you very much. And thank you all for taking time for me and the city of Santa Cruz, of course. Greg Cole, architect, and what I have today is just a demonstration of why we need this improvement so much. I'll start with what we got. This is what we got. And you'll see that in each one of these photographs, there's people out on the point. They've jumped the fence, or they cut a hole in the fence. They're out there. However, if we do this right, we could have a little urban park that may look like this, and it might be possible that the city of Santa Cruz would maintain it. That might be one of the offerings they could make to the state. And it doesn't hurt to give you examples of what other cities around the world have done with similar situations. These are overlooks in European cities. However, right here in Santa, in California coast, we have one of the best examples I like, which is Shell Beach, San Luis Obispo, and they've got these overlooks, in this case with Kiosk. I think I like that idea. And you can see what a messy thing it is to get out to our point now. So what are we asking of you? We're hoping, wishing, praying that a master plan can be created for what you want, what we want, and what's best for that point. It is an emerald on a finger waiting to be put there. And so it, this is what it may look like to have a master plan. However, this is what the state wants us to do, and I think it doesn't hurt to run butts by you again, and that is, oops, upside down. And right here is that five-foot barrier, five-foot barrier this direction, create a almost impossible situation for, certainly impossible for handicap or other people too, to get out to the point. The point is out here away from it. So they want a barrier here, and then also, this is horizontal out to a handicap access at this point to justify their ADA funds. However-
Well, just be careful. 15 seconds.
Okay, you got it. This plan has been adopted by, approved by the Seabright Association, also the Santa Cruz Surfing Club. It is a variation on what the county gave us, but it does have handicap access all the way down to here because of a very small slope all the way. So this is what we're hoping you could endorse as your goal for the point or something close to it. We need a committee to create that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Anyone else?
Hold the key.
Understood. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address us under oral communication? Seeing, hearing, none. We are on Presiding Officer announcements. I would like to announce that items 13 and 14 on today's agenda will be continued until our February 11th meeting. This is based on late information having arrived and the need for the city to do a further bit of review and analysis. So items 13 and 14 on the agenda continued to November 11th. Excuse me. What did I say? February, huh? Okay. I guess I'm getting way ahead of myself this year. Thank you very much, sir, till February 11th. Madam Vice Mayor, I know you had a quick Presiding Officer, or Officer announcement.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I just wanted to announce to the community that council members Trigara and Brunner and I are working to bring forward an agenda item reaffirming our status as a sanctuary city. Along with that, we will be outlining how we have and will continue to work with partners in terms of implementation. We really want to be thoughtful and thorough about this, so just rest assured that it is coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Our Representative for League California Cities, Councilmember Brunner, also has an announcement to make.
Thank you. I just wanted to share with the council and members of the public that we are part of the Monterey Bay Division of the League of California Cities, and the Monterey Bay Division has appointed myself to the Community Services Policy Committee and Councilmember Golda to the Public Safety Policy Committee. And we meet throughout this year, and this past Friday, we met in Sacramento, and there are approximately 50 city officials from across the state that sit on these seven different policy committees and review policies that are brought forward by all the city representatives. And I just wanted to share for Community Services, we cover a wide range of topics, including childcare, children, housing, homelessness, behavioral health, substance use, park, bond funds, public parks, facilities, libraries, seniors, natural disasters, smoking and tobacco. And so with all of that, there were a series of surveys and priorities identified, and we adopted a work plan for 2025, which I wanted to share. And the top topics in the work plan that we'll be working on this year in Community Services Policy Committee is homelessness and behavioral health services, parks, recreation, and access to open space, early learning, childcare, and youth programs, and emergency preparedness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are on statement of disqualification. Any member have a statement of disqualification? It's under regular agenda. Additions, we've already gone over that. We have the elimination of, I'm sorry, the continuation of items 13 and 14. Mr. Gandotti, other items?
No. Mayor, we do have one addition. For item seven, which is the Emergency Debris Removal Contract Authorization of Emergency Contracts and Budget Adjustments.
Yes.
An additional contract was added to that item post-packet production, made available to the council, as well as in the back of the room pertaining to a $400,000 contract with granite construction. So I just wanted to call your attention to that.
Thank you very much. City Attorney, report on closed session.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Keeley, members of the city council. Two items were discussed in closed session this afternoon in the courtyard conference room. Item one was pending litigation, the case of Lauren Brown versus the city of Santa Cruz, currently pending in the Alameda County Superior Court. Item two was lease negotiations. The council met with and gave instructions to its chief negotiator, Bonnie Lipscomb, concerning 11 businesses on the Santa Cruz Wharf. One of those, 45 municipal wharf, is also listed on your consent calendar today as Agenda Item Nine for council action. Otherwise, there was no reportable action.
Thank you. Ms. Bush, any items to report on the calendar?
No, no change.
Thank you so much. We are on the consent agenda. For those that might be unfamiliar with it, how we handle this is items four through 10 will be taken up at one time on one motion. Prior to taking that motion, what we will do is work our way around the city council to see if members want an item pulled, make a comment on it, or have a question about it. We will then ask members of the public the same to make any comments on the consent agenda. When you make, if you are intending on making your comments on consent agenda, you have three minutes total, three minutes total. Even if you have one item to comment on, or 25 items to comment, you have one three-minute segment to do that. I will begin on my left with Councilmember Golda on the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull item nine, please.
Item nine will be pulled. Councilmember O'Hara.
Comment on item five, the minutes.
Yes.
Just a few friendly corrections that I think were just a clerical error on the minutes. Item with regard to the municipal wharf and wharf business recovery recommendations, striking approval of recommended rent relief. That was not part of my friendly amendment. I think the clerk's office already has this on record. And then also with regard to the Community Wide Climate Action Plan 2030, there is a very small change to those minutes as well with regard to the voting being a majority and not a two-thirds majority. And again, our office has that as well. No other comments?
Your items. Thank you. The vice mayor is recognized on the consent agenda?
No comments. Thanks.
Mr. Newsom is recognized. Councilmember Newsom is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment on item number eight. I'm just happy to see this item on our agenda and look forward to serving with Mike, with you and with Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson on this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brunner on the consent agenda.
A quick comment on item number six and a question on item seven.
Please proceed.
So for item- So for item number six, National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, AKA NOAA, Climate Resilience Regional Challenge Grant, Approval to Execute Sub-A Ward of Grant Funds to Develop a Final Design and Implementation of Living Shoreline in Main Beach Flood Mitigation Habitat Enhancement and Restoration in Jesse Street Marsh and San Lorenzo Park. And this item covers three of our city districts, one of them being District Two, and specifically Jesse Street Marsh being in District Two, which is my district. And I just wanted to comment on the city team and staff for all of the work in these funds and the restoration that will happen in these areas and the environmental investment, I think, will be huge. And I really appreciate this work. So thank you very much.
Item seven? I believe you had a question on seven.
Yes. So we received a contract for storm debris removal, which was just mentioned as an addition. And I haven't had a chance to read this yet. And so I'm just curious the intent for this in terms of us. We have this huge packet here.
Sure, I appreciate the question, Councilmember Brunner. I'll take a first crack at it and see if I can answer it. But the city to date has expended about $385,000 under an emergency contract for debris removal. This is part of the initial storm response work. The contract you have in front of you for $400,000 would be in addition to that work as part of a longer-term agreement with Granite Construction to continue any additional debris removal that may be required over the coming months and years. That's the contract you have in front of you that was added after the packet was produced.
Does it refer to the third part of the recommendation in the motion? Adopt a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2025 budget to newly appropriate 400,000 of funds?
That's the actual budget adjustment itself that'll allocate the 400,000. And then the prior item on there, item two, would be the actual authorization to execute the contract. We also have Vivian Pearson here, who has been serving in her capacity with our logistics section within our emergency response operations, who's been helping pull this all together.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Vivian Pearson, serving as logistics chief in the interim. So you have essentially the first contract, which was the emergency contract that we quickly entered into following the emergency. And then the second contract is an interim contract that we're putting in place to work exclusively with Granite Construction after reviewing as a sole source. And so we will be working directly with Granite Construction for about an interim, approximately a month. And then we're also simultaneously putting out RFP for a request for proposal for a longer-term on-call service in case we need support in the future.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Trigero on the consent agenda.
No additional questions or comments. Thank you.
This would be the opportunity for anyone who's with us today wishes to comment upon the consent agenda. This is your opportunity to do so up to a period of time of three minutes.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Lots of clarifications today. I want to comment on number five, the minutes. I know that the clerks have a very difficult job and they always do the best they can. And I guess I'll just leave it at that for that. But to continue about the minutes, I mean, I don't remember what I exactly said. It was recorded. I wrote it down. On item number 24 about the wharf, which had to do with my observations after showing up here fairly consistently the past five and a half years about a systemic incompetence about the executive staff. And guess what? I'm referring to Tony Candati and I'm referring to the city manager. I'm not referring to anybody else because those two individuals control the rest of you. And maybe what I said was just kind of misleading. And if I have an opportunity to expand, I'm going to try. So when you stand outside this room, you see a California and a U.S. flag. When you're in this room, you see a California and U.S. flag that have a corporate maritime pirate fringe on it. So there's several different ways that our legal system is actually operating. But since before 1915, charter cities and counties where the un-elected official, the city manager, is in control of the city council members and like the board of supervisors, the county manager is in control of the supervisors. So Santa Cruz, city of, state of, nation of, is a for-profit corporation. But it's only really concerned about their stakeholders. And my understanding is most of those stakeholders want to see 90-day returns. Whereas they're like native peoples, maybe think about seven generations, 20 years times seven, 140 times four. That's an outlook that is 560 times further. So I could read a really fun definition of fiduciary trust that I sent to you, Mr. Keeley. I never cease to be surprised by the things I wrote years ago. And I'm seeing a lot of fiduciary trust malfeasance. I mean, oh, good, I have a minute. How special. So what brought me into here, you know, probably in June of 2019, was why are we allowing military frequency weapons in civilian locations? And although I appreciate Mr. Tony Candati's reminding everybody about, what is it, the 1996 FCC 703 guideline? The only complaint people can make is about how the, about how it looks. But that stuff is just horrifically terrible. And we're, you know, in a feudalistic society, it's okay if 90% of the peasants die. And that's what we're looking forward to with this. And it's just really sad that more people aren't speaking out. Now, the way that it is, you know, I'm, if, if, we just have some really challenging situations. And I just, but I'm open about that as possible, even though, you know, I'm probably pissing off most of the people in the room. And if everybody had been listening, I would have pissed everybody off.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online, Ms. Bush?
No one with their hand raised.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the city council meeting.
Hi, good afternoon. Yes, dear Mayor Keeley and council members, thank you again for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Dr. Jesse Trauler Ojeda. I'm a new member of the community, having just moved here to Santa Cruz three weeks ago into District One. My moving here is because I'm the newly positioned Climate Resilient Grant Manager as part of California Marine Sanctuary Foundation. We have offices located downtown. CMSF is the lead recipient of the NOAA Climate Resilience Regional Challenge Grant. As both a community member and professional colleague in the city of Santa Cruz, I'd like to offer my support in the adoption of the contract on Agenda Item Number Six. That will provide nearly 8 million in federal funds to help adapt to a changing climate. As we're all aware, especially recently with the wildfires that ravaged our neighbors to the south, the devastating effects of climate change are here right now and will continue to be felt unless our communities work together to build resiliency. One way to build a climate resilient community is through the adoption of nature-based solutions, which look to our natural processes and features to address environmental and social challenges. This project by the city, if executed, will do exactly that. Implement nature-based solutions to protect the city from dangers associated with sea level rise, storm surge, and large rain events, which may cause flooding. The city is a leader in this effort in the region, if not the entire state, in protecting our coastlines and the community that inhabits it. So the work will set a model for coastal cities across the nation. It demonstrates that we collectively can address the challenges of a changing climate in a way that isn't walls and armors, but instead elegantly incorporates the natural features these coastlines once held, features designed by nature to buffer severe coastal flooding. Lastly, I want to touch on the memo from President Trump's office that was issued just last night regarding a pause in the dispersment of federal funds, grants, and loans as of today. So as this is a federal grant, the NOAA award would be included. We've been in constant contact with our NOAA program manager and with our congressional leaders to get some clarity on what this means. And we've been instructed that this is not a stop-work notice and to continue forward with grant operations, even though dispersment of funds may be paused temporarily. It's to be, it's still to be determined. I hope the city can, and its leadership can take note of the importance of the adoption, not only for the city of Santa Cruz and its community, but also in establishing a climate resilient California for our future. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And thanks to you and to Robert Mazurik and the entire foundation. They do great work, great work. All right, anyone else on the consent agenda? Seeing, hearing, none. The matter is back before the body. What's the consent agenda? Motion seconded by Councilmember O'Hara. Debate or discussion? Seeing, hearing, none. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigero?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Aye. Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. We will, on item nine, we are on the Santa Cruz Wharf lease for construction, a new restaurant at 45 Municipal Wharf. Presentation on this by Mr. McCormick. Mr. McCormick?
Oh, I don't think we're having a presentation. I just pulled it off consent. I don't think we're having a presentation. I just pulled it off consent.
Oh, did you want a presentation?
I didn't think we were, no, I don't think a presentation is necessary. I just had a comment and for the reason. So I think this is, this is the former Miramar site that, that economic development and Mr. McCormick have been working with. The, my, like, my, my, blinking on his name right now, Gilbert.
Yeah.
Mark Gilbert on this for several years. And so I think in an effort to expedite the building process, I would like this, this to just move forward with less red tape and not to go back to the Historic Preservation Commission and just come back before us or, you know, move through the process in the most quick way possible, navigating all of the agencies involved. And so that's why I pulled it. And so that's all.
Let me see, would you like to make?
So my motion is to move the staff recommendation. But if there's any modifications to the building, not to have it go before Historic Preservation, understanding that it's going to be similar in nature and we just want to move things along.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from the member who has the wharf in their district. All right, any debate or discussion on this item? Mr. Newsom?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to just say really excited to see that item on the agenda. That, you know, our wharf's vital to our local, to our local economy. And this item will bring a much-needed seven, eight million dollars in investment to that iconic landmark. And will also provide more jobs in our community and generate rental income and sales tax income to our city coffers. So just want to say really happy to see, really happy to see that item on our agenda and happy to support it. And I'm happy to support the motion made by my colleague, Councilmember Golda. It's my understanding that it is not a legal requirement for the, this project to go in front of the Historic Preservation Committee. That was just more of a courtesy when it went in front as well. So, and they have provided input. So, thank you.
With a debate or discussion. Since this is a motion on an item that is on our consent agenda, I'm going to take an oblique angle at this only to say the following, that we don't respond to oral communication, but I feel duty-bound to say that, at least from the perspective of the mayor, both Mr. Candati and Mr. Huffaker are two of the finest public employees I've ever worked with in any level of government, and I have full faith and confidence in them. And the clerk will call the roll.
I will say we don't have any one on public comment online. Don't know if you want to.
Public comment, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers Trigero?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion carries and so ordered. We are on item 11. This is a living wage rate annual prescription for fiscal year 2026. We have a packet of information on this. Is there a presentation that is going to be made? Any staff member? Then the matter is before the body. Questions or comments by council members? Questions or comments by members of the public? Matters back before the body. Pleasure of the body.
I'll move, I'll move item ten.
Motion by Councilmember O'Hara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. Debate or discussion? Seeing, hearing, none. The clerk will call the roll.
Member Trigero?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Keeley?
Aye. We are on item 11. This is the 2021-22 Department of Housing and Urban Development, an amended, an amendment to the Annual Action Plan. Any presentation on this item by staff member? Seeing, hearing, none. Questions, comments by, excuse me, go ahead.
I think we just did this item. I think we're on 12 right now.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, we're on 2024 Health and All Policies Progress Update. No, I, I think I'm on the right one.
You are, you are, you're a mayor.
Was I on the right one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, okay. It's all good, it's all good, it's all good. I, I don't pretend to be infallible in my job, so, very good. So we are back on item 11. It is the 2021 Program Annual Action Plan Amendment to our HUD action plan. Let me see if there is any kind of staffer. Let me just get to, I'm going to get to you. I'll get there. But let me see if there's staff report seen, hearing, none. Ms. Bush?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just going to confirm. I think we just did item 11.
Mayor, just real quickly, point of order. The council technically approved item 10 twice, because it was approved as part of the consent agenda. Then the mayor had moved on to item 11, which is the item we're on now, that the council has not taken action on yet.
Out of an, out of an abundance of caution, we are going to stay with item 11 right now. All right, very good. And let me see, first of all, are there comments by, by members? If they have a question, comment, we'll start, Councilmember O'Hara, and we'll work our way around. Councilmember?
Question for staff, most likely. I was just kind of curious about the London Nelson Project, what was the delay? I realize as a new council member, I probably have information on this because it was already approved in the budget. But I did want to just have a sense of why the London Nelson Project had not moved forward.
My name is Jessica Meller. I'm the Housing Principal Management Analyst in your Economic Development and Housing Department. Thank you for having me today. So the London Nelson Senior Art Studio Project, it's, we've had a lot of delays with COVID-19 for a lot of our CDBG projects. And as we were looking with our Parks and Recreation colleagues and discussing what makes sense for timeline with this project and also potentially additional needs for the scope of this project, and looking at our other priorities for CDBG funding, we decided that collectively it would make more sense to reallocate this funding to another senior project to benefit the same population.
Thank you, appreciate it. One little quick follow-up. Would that project still be considered for future funding? Do they have to reapply or what would be that process?
Yeah, so every year we do ask that we receive applications for CDBG funding so that we have that on record, that we have an application. But there's nothing that would bar them from applying for future years.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brunner, I believe you had your hand up on this.
My hand was up on the previous confusion with 10 and 11.
Thank you. Further questions or comments on this item? Mr. City Attorney, I have a very quick question for disclosure. My home is at 121 Market Street. My understanding is about 900 feet away from the senior center. So I need some advice from you whether or not I should vote on this matter?
You may vote on the matter. It's outside of the 500-foot radius that we would measure from.
Thank you. I want to be careful. I wanted to be careful on that. Thank you, sir. For the debate or discussion or question or comment, let me go to the public, see if anyone has a question or comment on this item. We have anyone online, Ms. Bush? Good afternoon, Greg. Please come forward. Nice to see you, sir.
Good afternoon, and I'm, I'm also infallible. No, no. Mayor, you're, the, the city does have amazing quality of staff and, and elected and staff. I'm not kidding. Housing issues? We'll talk about the, I'll, I'll, I'll send some emails, but I just couldn't sit by and, and, and hear that. Sweeps that are going on and we don't have any case managers available for housing and there's a, a pause, but if I'm go, if I'm out of order. There are no, there, it, there's an intake pause at the Armory. Some people can get into the shelter here if they're blind, like a friend of mine who was just terrorized by the sweep and, but, but staff there did get her taken care of. There's no space in at the inn. You said that at the press conference and, and with all due respect, it's, you said that despite the grants pass stuff that you would maintain a, the same policy. There's no case managers, period. There's no emergency shelter. There is the occasional arbitrary shelter that, that's beautiful. I stayed there last night and they do an amazing job. And I mean, and I love this town and I love everybody here, but being on Coral Street yesterday and seeing the sweeps. And the cops weren't having fun. They, it's, it's a harsh, and I understand at the same time that we're not holding, you know, I'm homeless. We're not upholding our end of the bargain at all as far as the social contract, but fentanyl plus a social contract means zero. Lot of people are really messed up out there, but they are still humans. I just wish that we can figure something out and otherwise we're in injunction territory again, correct? Counselor Kandadi?
You, you can look at it.
I, I, I mean this in the best nature. Let's, let's just, I just want to put those ideas in people's minds and I really do respect what you guys do and, and that's all the way around, even Huffaker.
Even?
No, 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 I'm just kidding. Everybody's awesome. I honestly, thank you though. Appreciate that you listened.
I appreciate you and the work you do out in the homeless community with your friends and others. Thank you, Greg. Good to see you, sir. Anyone else on this, on this item? Seeing here none, matters back before the body. Preference, Councilmember O'Hara?
I'll move item eleven.
There's motions, there are second. Councilmember Trigaro seconds under debate or discussion. Seeing here none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keely?
Aye.
Unless I'm mistaken, again, we're on item, oh, this 2024 Health and All Policies Program Update. We, we do have very wonderful staff. Dr. Wise West, how are you?
Very well, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Tiffany Wise West, Sustainability and Resiliency Officer for the city, and I'm here to bring you your annual update on health and all policies for 2024 and to present the committee's work plan, the City Council Committee for Hyatt's work plan for 2025. So for the benefit of the new members of our council, I will provide just a brief background on health and all policies. I will give an update on the progress that we made in 2024, hit some highlights on the work plan for 2025, and then of course, we'll share the recommendations for you to consider. So, and by way of background, in 2019, under the leadership of then Mayor Martine Watkins, the city adopted a Health and All Policies ordinance that prioritized equity, sustainability, and public health in policymaking and decision making at the city. As you can see to the right hand side, there are a number of pillars that support health and all policies, collaboration, co-benefits, structural and process change, and engagement. All of this to say, we are, the intention of Health and All Policies is that by elevating these pillars in your decision making, you're making more holistic decisions that will improve community well-being. And in fact, we have adopted a number of community well-being indicator metrics to track that over time, and these are metrics that are meant to be tracked over the decadal scale, not year to year. So we report on those occasionally as there are trends that are notable. In 2021, the city also adopted an antiracial discrimination resolution that you can see the Black Lives Matter mural to the left that came soon after that. That reinvigorated our Health and All Policies initiative. It revived the City Council Committee on Health and All Policies, and at the same time, we adopted a three-year work plan that we are in our last year in, in 2025, that we are implementing. So in 2024, the Health and All Policies Committee met six times, and some of the highlights that I will, that I'll mention, they really shepherded the development of the gas leap floor ordinance. We provided training to all advisory bodies on health and all policies and climate, climate work. We also instituted a specific section on the agenda report, which increased the compliance with that requirement that is in the city council policy of holistically and meaningfully addressing the three pillars to thirty-three percent of all agenda reports last year. We expect with this end of the year addition that we will increase that substantially this year for your benefit. Also, I want to acknowledge the council members, they presented to the Society of Practitioners of Health Impact Assessment. We are often asked to talk about the Health and All Policies Initiative as it is somewhat unique and the way we've operationalized it is different than other jurisdictions and in fact, is different across all jurisdictions. We also have worked with the clerk's office to increase diversity in local government and advisory bodies through our recruitment and with the finance department, developed a city compensation policy and pilot program for advisory body members, which your council also allocated twenty-four thousand or twenty-five thousand dollars for that in this current budget cycle. I want to note just a few of our ongoing annual activities. So Health and All Policies Committee hears every year updates on core. They also hear updates on workforce development, the community development block grant funding allocations, building electrification, things like the objective standard pros, project and the housing element implementation, among other things. So those were the highlights from 2024 across the city and with the committee. We, the committee also did receive reports, a number of different reports, for example, on our diversity, equity, inclusion and access program that's in development as part of HR's culture as a competitive advantage. They also heard quite a bit on youth programming across the city, which again is an ongoing, both of these things are ongoing into the 2025 work plan, and received a, a report on the 2024 City Like Me, which again is reporting on the diversity in our advisory bodies and on council. Notably also last year, there was a new RFP request for proposals for core that also the Health and All Policies Committee was involved in. So going forward in 2025, in addition to those ongoing activities that I just mentioned, we will be developing an EV employee rebate pilot program for lower income city employees will be hearing, the, the committee will be hearing about the development, the exploration of a tobacco product waste ordinance that is a bit continued from prior years as well. We will be receiving a, a report from Semajitas, which is a savings account program that automatically enrolls each child born in Santa Cruz County at the time of birth and gives seed funding for future milestones in their life. And that is done by ventures who receive core funding for that program. And notably, we will be developing the next three-year implementation work plan for Health and All Policies over this year with check-in milestones at the Health and All Policies Committee meetings. With that, these are the recommendations you do have as part of your agenda report, the calendar of the scheduled activities over the year, but the recommendations are to accept the 2024 update and adopt the 2025 work plan. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have and thank you for your time.
Dr. Wise West, thank you very much for your excellent work and your team, Bernie and the others who are on your team. Thank you so much. It's excellent work. Let me ask council members if there are questions and comments. And we'll go to Vice Mayor and then we'll go Councilmember O'Hara and then Councilmember Brunner. Man, Vice Mayor?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you, Dr. Wise West, and thank you, Mr. Bernie Lazarino, for your work in the Health and All Policies and keeping us going and keeping us on task. And thank you for the presentation today. I wanted to add that this coming year, we have a, out of our four youth liaisons, we have one youth liaison who's very interested in the Health and All Policies work and we've shifted our schedule so that we can accommodate for that youth liaison to hopefully join us in future meetings. So that's all, thank you so much.
Councilmember O'Hara?
Thank you, Dr. Wise West and Bernie as well. I had an opportunity to see Councilmember, ex-Councilmember Watkins a couple of weeks ago, and I, I told her, and I will say to you, I think her leadership around this in particular is one of the most consequential things we've done as a community and as a city. And your leadership moving it forward and keeping all of the boundaries up because it can be so expansive is really to be commended. I did want to reflect on, so right before Councilmember Trigaro and I were, were installed on camp, on campus, my head is up on campus right now on council. There were some very robust conversations about core at both the county and the city. I think it was the last meeting in November for, before Thanksgiving. And I know with Health and All Policies, that committee providing some oversight of core, you just mentioned, they provided some oversight of the RFP that was just released and we're moving into those contracts. I think it would make sense for the committee this year to make some recommendations as to what oversight body, whether it be the Health and All Policies Committee, another committee of council or at staff level, what the city is going to do moving forward with, with core funding, especially as it relates to the relationship between the city and the county and working together on kind of braiding those funds together. So that would be one suggestion that I have, and I'd like to hear any comments that you might have about capacity and or interest in, in having that conversation in Health and All Policies.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Hara. Did, Vice Mayor, did you have something first?
That's okay, Mayor. I just wanted to comment that there was direction given during the core conversation to form a working group to revisit how we address core, not necessarily in Health and All Policies, but for a working group. So I just wanted to give that clarification for Councilmember O'Hara when that agenda item was reviewed.
I also wanted to provide context that those contracts are already in progress as of last year, and I know that Director Larry M. Wall is here, who is the staff that is responsible for core and give, can give you a fuller update on that. I'm not working on that day to day. Larry, do you have, you want to?
Good afternoon, Mr. M. Wall, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Yeah, sort of the action that came out of November nineteenth with the presentation to make recommended awards through the RFP process that was jointly with the county and the city, those were approved along with the set aside that the council discretion to make six additional grants. And the direction to staff was to come back with a couple of specific items. So come back on, on April, on or before April thirtieth. And that's we'll come back with the actual contracts that are executed from the county for all the grant awards, so that we'll have those adopted, so that we'll have those updates. The further direction was also to come back with different funding options, and I think that'll help determine a process with council involvement and how to determine how we do this for the next cycle. So these are three-year grants, so we have a little bit of a runway before the next RFP cycle or whatever the, the process that's determined. But the next step will be coming back to this body with some funding model options and some guidance from council on where we go next.
Mayor, if I may add a couple of comments to Tiffany and Larry's comments. So appreciate, appreciate that direction. Councilmember O'Hara, I think the Health and All Policies Committee could certainly serve as that working group if the council is so inclined to do so. And staff will be prepared to bring some options back to the council on April, following that direction. As Larry mentioned, we have a bit of a runway here now that we're moving into a three-year funding period. But I want to also acknowledge that unraveling or moving away from the core program is no small undertaking, so we will need all of that time and look forward to working with the council to do so.
Councilmember Brunner? I, I'm sorry, I believe you had your hand up.
I did, and I was, just had to re-shift my thought back to that. Thank you. As a member of Health and All Policies Committee and, you know, I was vice mayor when I revived the committee and put forth the racial equity resolution, and I just want to say how much of an impact our work has been and how it's evolved and grown. And I, I think it's one of those things that's not necessarily front and center in the community. It's, the impact is kind of behind the scenes in the ripple effect, and I'm very proud of the work we've done. So thank you for highlighting. That brief summary was just a touch on, on what we've been able to accomplish, and I'm looking forward to the, you know, the future of this committee and how we've just continually improved our systems internally and the work out externally for the community and, and really adopting all those pillars of health and community well-being at the forefront in so many aspects. So thank you to you and, and everybody who has contributed to the work on the city team and the community and fellow. We have new Councilmember Trigaro on that committee now, and so thank you.
For the questions or comments before we go out to the public, seen here none, this will be the opportunity for the public, either those who are with us in chambers or online to make comments on this item. Do we have anyone online? Fair enough, good. Thank you, sir. We'll go to the person online. Good afternoon, person online, welcome to the council meeting.
Yes, hi, this is Garrett. I don't know if you've been paying attention to the current national decision making, but DEI and all the federal DEI employees got drop kicked, ceased and desisted like, hey, DEI employees, you made a bad career decision. We should do the same and save the taxpayers a lot of money with all this DEI distraction nonsense. I think you should release the total salary savings possible by elimination of all DEI personnel and by the canceling of all DEI obligatory city employees at documentation training and their trainers, rewrite Hyatt, delete DEI, and I sure hope more White House executive orders are coming with regard to that. As to this item summary, have you considered that a great many city agenda items just don't qualify for these high up distractions from real issues and real solutions, let alone its required addition of such as an agenda item template as if any of them do? Paying the bills just isn't racist sexist justice, Justice E. Warrior stuff. Did you get the message that the merit of ideas and performance is now the national recognized priority system and is now the common sense rational standard to evaluate people and ideas? The real loser type national Democrats pushing DEI have consistently shown they are incapable of governance, have not a lick of talent, and understandably are going to need those preemptive pardons to avoid jail time. Listing racial diversity or inclusive appointments to align with nonsense demographic quotas is now affirmed as discrimination. I'll be watching your commissioned appointments later to see who the closet Marxists are who missed the message of the last election. Continuing to honor Marxist violent and criminal organizations like the National Black Lives Matter Group, perpetuating that stain on in history is not an accomplishment. Okay, you get the idea. I don't think leftist ideas or narratives are worth a spitball, but honestly, Hyatt gets loaded with anti-racist racism, which is simply discrimination, racism against white or sexism against males. You should repeal Hyatt as the globalist poison in our Munich code that it is as soon as possible. I would remind you that California is drowning in regulation and taxes. At some point, the focus on nonsense regulations and DEI chokes off the economy and the house of cards collapses, goes up in fire and individual rights disappear, not to mention the total waste of resources because of the culture killing cultism ideology. I really was looking through the summary, seeing if there was anything I would agree with as a useful accomplishment. Maybe the oversized vehicle ordinance, no thanks to Hyatt. And well, nothing else came to mind, but maybe I missed one or two. There are 17 mentions of equity, none of which I can say promote real equity in any way, which means fairness and not the leveling of people by force to the lowest common denominator. This could only be written by you know who, but hey, put Niedermeyer on it. Seriously, these distractions are peripheral issues instead of day to day reality based on issues is why wherks fall into the ocean, why San Lorenzo floods, why our forests burn up, and why our economy is steeped in a cesspool of government dependence and why governments are locked in perpetual increased tax mode. Try to make America great again by dissolving Health and All Policies. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ewing, good afternoon again, sir. Welcome.
Yeah, it's actually so nice to still be here. My name's James Schilling Whitman. I don't think I have anything to say after what Garrett said. No, no, no. But I wish that he would show up in person. You know, I, I really strive to try to communicate like I'm a solo teacher in K through eight. In these times, you often can't say this. I mean, this was an interesting thing to listen to. This is something I wrote and published a year ago today. My comment to exposing the World Economic Forum, it's a brainwashing cult. Foundations of stupidity, ignorance, scientisms, doltness might only be physically apparent if one were to experience the board of supervisors and county professional staff than public comments from UCSC students and graduate students in the county of Santa Cruz, California, like from December 13th, 2022, on Agenda Item 14, Carbon Reduction 2030 to 2045. Because seeing and actually hearing the range and depth of these woke idiots sadly matches too much that folks seem to have degrees of natural stupidity and fiduciary trust malfeasances. I don't think I'd read that to a class. Maybe I would. But you know what is really going on? I mean, this is just, it's utterly ridiculous. I mean, the scent most fluid on planet Earth is not fossil fluid. That's what a bunch of lies made up like Rockefeller, John D. Rockefeller in 1890. So, you know, hemp replaces 85% of what oil does. So we have that. You know, we have so many issues going on that just are talked about and people are being praised for, for things that I, that I wish I could praise them if they said some different things because this is just extremely challenging to be a witness of. Sometimes I wonder why I continue to show up. Now, I certainly wanted to speak on item number 13, but it's been postponed to November 11th. February. That was great, you know, and I should have jumped like a fish out of water when I had the opportunity to make a rebuttal to you making another comment about your trust in some of our executive staff. Well, I have trust and faith that they're going to change because I can think of some of the individuals that have done the most harm or evil in the planet like Dookie Williams or Peter Grubbs or currently David Martin. They kind of set the stage how people can change and they're all good. And I certainly would like to see that from these two men. But I got, that's enough. This is, it to be a witness. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body. Recognize someone for a, a council member, excuse me, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'll move staff recommendation for the Health and All Policies item.
Motion, second by Councilmember Trigero. Under debate and discussion, Madam Vice Mayor, you may open on your motion.
I made my comments just again, and, and Councilmember Brunner, thank you for your additional comments. This is really impactful work. It goes beyond what you've shown on the slides. It has ripple effects throughout our departments and the decisions that we make. It gives us a lens by which we are guided by our decisions. So just thank you for the work and I'm looking forward to continuing to serve on this committee.
For the debate or discussion comments. I will say this because I will, again, not allow it to be said without a rebuttal. And that is not only do I have, Mr. Ewing indicated that maybe I had faith in all of our, some of our executive staff. Let me get very clear. I have, I have a great confidence and faith in all of our executive staff as I do our line level supervisors, our line level workers. This is a remarkable little government. I've served at the state level and the county level twice. And those of you that haven't served in other levels of government, I would ask you to ask around with other people, such as Senator Laird and others who have served in state and local offices. And I think you will find that they share my sentiment that we have a group of public employees from top to bottom and wall to wall whom we should be very proud and the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Newsom? Oh, sorry, Trigero?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Holder? O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor, Mayor Keeler?
Aye. We are on item 13. This is an ordinance meting the municipal code regarding sound amplification. That is continued 14, continued 15. I need a lot of help today. Item 15.1, we are on annual comprehensive financial report. Ms. Cabell, thank you very much. Thank you for all your good work. I had an opportunity to tour your department the other day when you and I had a meeting. And well, that's a pretty impressive group of folks you got over there. So thank you for your good work on this item.
Good afternoon, Elizabeth Cabell, Finance Director. I'm here to bring the annual comprehensive financial report, our ACFA, and our popular annual financial report, the PAFR, for your review, comments, and questions. I'd like to talk a little bit about the audit process and the opinion issued by our auditors, then take a look at the financial status as reported in the ACFA and share the awards we've received and the ones we hope to receive. The audit process begins with the interim audit and really doesn't end until we, until statements are issued at the end of the calendar year. We start providing information to the auditors in May, meet weekly with them starting in July, and continuously work together to provide everything needed to perform a comprehensive audit. This is very much a team effort as we are asked to provide samples that involve every division in the department. The culmination of this six month process is the issuance of an audit opinion and our ACFA. Our auditors are the Poon Group, and this is their second year of a five year contract. On December 27th, they issued an unmodified opinion, which means that the statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. In a much shorter way to say that, a clean audit, no findings. Now to dive a little bit into the numbers. When we talk about the general fund, we're usually talking about the operating general fund. But we actually have several general funds that roll up together for reporting purposes. This includes our war fund, the public trust fund, the economic development trust fund, the stabilization reserve. We ended 2024 with a small deficit in both the operating general fund and all general funds together, just under $1 million, which is right in line with our, we adopted a balanced budget in '24. So coming in as close as we did is right in line with a budget that was adopted in '24. I've spoken before about reserves and the fund balance of the operating general fund. And today I'd like to talk about the relationship between fund balance and reserves as reported in the financial statements, specifically the 50.5 million that's reported as our general fund fund balance in our financial statements. This chart illustrates the breakdown of the fund balance and shows how our reserves are represented in the fund balance. The non-spendable category of fund balance represents things that cannot be readily turned into cash. In our case, that's long-term receivables, things that we don't expect to collect in the next year, and also some advances that were made from non-operating general funds to other city funds that have defined multi-year repayment requirements. The committed fund balance category includes items that you, as city council, have specified can be used for specific purposes. In other words, contracts, projects, and POs that have been authorized, but the money has not yet been spent. In the current year budget, you can see those items as carryforwards or carried forward from '24 into '25. The restricted fund balance category represents items that have legal or legislative constraints restricting how the funds can be spent. In our case, this is our Section 115 Trust, which has, which is, has to follow the guidelines from the, by the IRS. The assigned fund balance category represents funds that you have set aside for a specific purpose. Our economic development trust fund falls into this category. There are three reserves that are part of this whole 50 and a half million dollar fund balance. The restricted pension reserve is about 9.9 million. The emergency reserve of 7 million, which is shown on the statements as unassigned fund balance. And the two months operating reserve, which is held in the operating general fund and is part of the committed fund balance. Another important financial statement measurement to look at is our cash and investment balance. Overall, our balance, our cash balance at the end of fiscal year '24 was just over 206 million. This slide shows the breakdown by fund type. And you can see the largest amount of cash is held by our water fund at about 47 million. And then the general fund with just over 35 million. The other document presented today is our popular annual financial report, which is a high level overview of the city's operations, services, and financial standing in an uncomplicated, understandable format that's easy to read. In other words, more pictures, less numbers. These have been distributed to all public counters and we encourage the public to pick one up the next time they are at City Hall. In 2023, we received a triple crown from GFOA, which means we've received awards for our ACFA, our PAFR, and our budget. That was the first time that we received that honor of, of all three awards for all three documents. All three have again been submitted for fiscal year '24, and we hope to repeat that honor for, for that fiscal year, for 2024. Creation and submission of these documents is a department wide effort, but naming all 30 people would not be, would be a bit much. So I wanted to take this opportunity just to call out the individuals that have led the creation of our budget, ACFA and PAFR. Tracy Cole and Emily Burton led the production of our 2024 budget. Nick Gong was the leader in our creation of our ACFA. And Emily Burton with, along with a lot of PMAs, all contributed to creating our popular annual financial report. And that's here. I'm here with staff as to answer any questions or anything that you may have. No specific actions, just for information.
Very good. Let me ask if council members have questions or comments on this item. Do not see, Ms. Cabell, as you know, you and I talked quite a bit during the year. I'm more than casually interested in our budget and our financial condition. And I think that the way that you and your department and the city management team present this is very consumable. Not everybody automatically gravitates towards budget. It's, it's, it's a different thing. It has its own language. It has its own rhythms to it. It has all kinds of things that are different than perhaps other parts of, or thinking about government, let's say from a policy perspective or other perspectives. I think that what you and your team do with all of this information, which is generally, again, not something that most people gravitate towards. In fact, I think most people run away from it a bit because of those things. So, but it's critically important, I think, that our, that the public and others who interact with us have a consumable way of understanding how we are managing the city's fisk, its fiscal condition. And that, not only having it available around here, but pushing that information out is, I think, a good idea, especially given how good you folks are at taking compound complex items and without oversimplifying them or patronizing people in the presentation, giving people a very consumable way to understand complex and compound issues. Let me see if there are other comments. Let me ask if there is anyone with, did you? I'm sorry, excuse me. Okay. Anyone with us wish to make comment on this item? Anyone with us online?
Yes.
We'll take the person online. Good afternoon and welcome. Person online, good afternoon. Three?
Yep, this is super quick. Hey, I, maybe I have this wrong, but why is not the actual financial documents in the agenda packet for the public to look at? I, I agree that some sort of simplified version is good for some people, but it, it almost looks like an attempt to hide the actual numbers. I mean, it doesn't, you know, the simplified version really doesn't tell the story in the detail some people might like. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. For folks' information, there is on the Santa Cruz City website and the Department of Finance, a section on financial reports that you can find by going to the website. And these are included in that as well, as I understand it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I think the gentleman raises a point. Can we access this? What is it? Let me see. Anybody else? No other folks online? No one else with us? Council, pleasure of the body. We got, we got a motion. I'll move, there we go. Second by the Vice Mayor. All right, motion and a second from the Vice Mayor, debate or discussion by members. Seen, here, and done. We'll move to vote.
Councilmember Trigero?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keeler?
Aye. Motion passes and is ordered. We are on item 16. This is the 2025 legislative program. We are being asked to take a look and identify two or three legislative priorities and to determine legislative platform issues for 2025. The Assistant City Manager, Ms. Murphy, has a presentation. Ms. Murphy, good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Lisa Murphy, Deputy City Manager for the city of Santa Cruz, and it's my pleasure today to present to you our legislative program. The legislative program establishes the principles that'll guide the city's policy and legislative advocacy efforts at the regional, state.
I'm going to ask you to do something, Ms. Murphy. Move that microphone closer. It just is a little hard. I'm an old man. I can't hear.
Is that better? All right. The purpose of the program is to create a plan that positions the city to capitalize on funding opportunities and provide input into legislation, both Washington, DC, and Sacramento. The importance of the legislative program is to really focus our efforts and be in strategic alignment, not only with our community partners, but our legislative partners as well and the issues at hand. It gives us a really focused, efficient use of our resources. It helps us to advocate more focusly. And again, it helps us to ensure our collaboration with our state and local legislators, that we're all on the same page. Just real quickly about our, our process. This is a newer process. This is the second year that we've implemented this, this format. We start off in September. Staff meets with the directors and we review what the platforms are, what the issues are, what do they see as emerging issues coming through their departments. Then we meet with the mayor and the vice mayor, hear their input, what are, what are their goals, what are the things they want to achieve? We meet with our legislative advocates, who we will meet in a little bit. Ask them to review our documents. What do they see on the, on the horizon? We take all of this input and then we put it together in our legislative program for the council to consider. But what's different with this approach is that we identify two to three very high priority issue areas that we want to focus, that the council would like to focus on. And then we really go hard after those. That's what we spend most of our time advocating for. And that's what we'll be discussing here today is what are those top priorities that you want your team to go and pursue? I've heard from several of you, the, the running theme so far has been housing and homelessness. But again, we'll get into that a little bit further. A quick overview of the new format of our, our program. It's broken into three sections. The first one you'll see is our legislative priorities. Again, those are the top two or three issue areas that you want us to pursue. The second is our legislative platform. It's more of a broad, general overview. And we identified last year in conjunction with the strategic plan, again, all of the input from the directors, the council, and our advocates, six legislative highlighted areas. The third section is our legislative action guide. And this is really just the how to. This has been a, a section that we've had for several years. And it's a how to for our directors to follow staff and council. When they see items that come up that they want to advocate for, what's the proper steps to go through? And helps us to focus what, who's, who's advocating for what? And to make sure that it's all in alignment with the council's policies. So in 2024, just take a quick look back. Those top tiered priorities were homeless response and specifically to go after funding for our shelter operations, affordable housing, the funding of creation of preservation of affordable and supportive housing, and infrastructure. infrastructure. The staff has reviewed, again, these areas and have still support for that, as well as, again, hearing from staff, council members, what are some of the top priorities? Okay, and then the broader look, again, is that legislative platform, and in 2024, there were six areas that were identified as, what is our broad areas? Homeless response, infrastructure and transportation, sustainability and resiliency, housing, public safety and community well-being, and economic vitality. Now, under each of those, what you'll see, you will see in the attachment from the prior year, was a number of issue areas that the council had supported. That remains largely unchanged after I've received a number of considerable input from, from the directors and our legislative advocates. There are some updates to them, such as e-bike policies, that, you know, there are some emerging issues that are coming out, particularly now that with the federal administration. But having these identified, these broader areas allows the council, allow staff to be more nimble when we want to go after, if we see some emerging legislation and want to take action on whether writing a, a letter in support to a committee. If it's identified here as an issuer of support, it allows the, the mayor or council member to move a little quickly and not have to wait to come back to council for action. But that doesn't mean you can't come back to council for action, obviously. There, there's, there's opportunities if you, to highlight certain areas of priority, you want to bring some considerable attention to it, and obviously, that flexibility, flexibility still remains. And just quickly, some of, we had a tremendous year last year. Some of the highlights of some of our activities, again, it was our first year really getting rolling. Unfortunately, this very first one, I just highlighted this morning in red, the 1.2 million impending federal earmarks for the war from Congressman Panetta, as you know, directive was just issued, putting that on hold. We don't know the outcome of that just yet. That's the community grant process. The city delegation, we went on a delegation in, to Sacramento in March of 2024, was led by the mayor and council member Newsom, where we went up there with a specific day to lobby about homeless funding. It was quite a full day. We, we met with Senator Weiner, we met with Assembly Speaker Robert Rivas, the governor's staff, all to focus our attention on that priority that was identified, which was homeless funding. And as a result of that, the city had a $2 point million grant for homeless shelter. That was just a one-time, but that was as a result of our efforts, being very focused and concentrated. We continued with our regular engagement with our federal and state delegation. We've supported several priority issues, and we did that through some letter writing. We supported, again, several state legislative bills. It was exciting. Early in the year last year, we hosted the Governor's Senior Advisor on Homelessness, Hafsa Keka. We've had multiple visits, site visits by Senator Laird, assembly members Addis and Palarin, of course Congressman Panetta, and again, continuously meeting with our legislators, legislators on homelessness, and as always, collaborate with the League of California Cities. And it's also exciting to hear, I know, Councilmember Bruner and Councilmember Golda sit on two policy divisions, and that really gives us a lot of, a great connection to hear firsthand what some of those priorities are, and helps us to act on those. What I'd like to do now, I have both of our legislative advocates here to give a brief update. The first we were going to hear from is from our federal lobbyists, Capital Edge, it's Chris Giglio. He'll do a brief presentation, I believe he's on, online, and then we'll hear from our state advocate, Amy Jenkins, from Precision Advocacy. I'll return back with the, at the conclusion of their presentation to, to wrap up and get us to our next steps. So, if Chris is present.
I am. Thanks, Lisa. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Vice Mayor. There, and Vice Mayor, we, we spoke a couple of weeks ago about, you know, the platform, and, and I think that a few things have changed since then, but, but I would, I would say a couple of the things that we, we spoke about were, you know, the two things that I thought this, this were going to be sort of highlights for this congressional session, particularly the next six months or so, were two things, was one was a big tax bill. The president is, would like to extend some of the tax cuts that are expiring from that big 2017 tax cut bill that was enacted. And then the second was implementing some pretty aggressive immigration policies, and, you know, the costs and responsibilities related to those two things. And I thought that those would be, you know, sort of very front and center. I think they are still front and center, but as you probably know, a few things have happened in the last week that have kind of shaken things up. This administration is, is looking to, you know, sort of forcefully change the way that federal government works, and so what they, what they've done, and you all know this, have probably seen this, they, they initiated what they are calling a pause, a temporary pause, on awarding of federal grants and loans and, and all sorts of other things until the White House Office of Budget Management and Budget can look at those programs and, and determine whether they align with the president's priorities. And, and you can sort of see what some of the president's priorities are through his, the executive orders that he issued in the, in the initial days of the administration over the last week. They involve, you know, sort of attacks on, on, on DEI and those policies, climate change, of course, illegal immigration, and, and those, those seem to be the, the places where they're looking. Now, the, the memorandum and the statements that the White House is making seem to be much more broad than that. A temporary hold on pretty much all federal grants and loans is, is serious, and, and so what we don't know is whether that's legal. We know that, that Congress has the power of the purse, and that, and that they should, they have some say over this. I have a feeling that, that a lot of this is going to be settled in the courts. I just saw some, I haven't seen officially, but a, a federal judge may have actually in the last few minutes ruled on this, on this temporary pause. I think it's going to be settled in the courts. Congress, right now, Republican leadership in Congress, their initial reactions to this pause seem to be not a bad idea, so they're not going to take on this, this, this issue. So I think what we do in, in the, in the process is, is we, we see what happens. I don't think we stop engaging with the federal government because of this. We let the federal government tell us that we're going to pause. We've got a few, you know, sort of outstanding grants that, that I, that I hope are not at risk, and that I hope eventually will be, will be funded by, by the, by the administration, but we shall see. We also want to keep the, the congressional delegation up to date on, on those outstanding funds that we have sitting out there. They want to know, they want to do what they can to help. So I didn't want to take up too much of your time, and maybe I can answer questions if you, you know, you've seen things come across that you might have questions about, I can, I can try to help. It's, it's been kind of drinking from a fire hose for the past week, but, but I think that I've got a handle on most things.
Chris, thank you very much. Would you mind, Ms. Murphy, if we ask a couple of questions of Chris before we move on to the state? Thank you, if that doesn't interrupt your presentation. Let's see if, if we do have questions on this. The vice mayor is recognized.
Hi, Chris. Nice to see you. Thanks for that report and, and drinking from the fire hose on our behalf. I, I don't know if you're going to be able to answer this, but you mentioned the Republicans' response and reaction to this pause on grants and loans. I can imagine what the Democrats' reaction is, but beyond reaction, is there any discussion from the Democrats as to what steps they're going to take to land on a decision?
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of discussion going on. I don't think they've, you know, coalesced around anything, but again, like I was saying, it's, it's probably going to have to be litigation that, that moves the needle on this as opposed to Congress doing it. So I think that maybe, you know, finding that, that right case to go forward with, you know, seeing a, you know, an entity being denied funding for, for, for the reasons outlined in these memos that the White House has put out, and I think, you know, Democratic leadership would probably help with that, with that process. Again, you know, being in the minority makes it hard for them to, to move things legislatively, you know, especially if, if the Republicans are not willing at this point to go along.
Just one follow-up. Is, is there a sense of, like, how long we're going to be in this waiting period?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think it's going to be at least a few months. Allegedly, the, the federal agencies have until, have sometime in the next two to three weeks to report back on the programs in, under their jurisdiction, and as to whether they, you know, these programs meet the goals of the, the current administration or don't. And then that, you know, that then puts the onus on the White House Budget Office to, to determine what they, what they think are next steps. And there's, you know, there's a lot of different ways to kind of skin this cat. You know, there are some programs where awards were announced, and, and funding is sort of already moving. The, the awardees have what they call signed grant agreements. That makes it a little more difficult for this administration to completely take away that funding. In areas where there are no signed grant agreements, there's not as much leverage on the awardees, on the awardee's side to be able to keep that money. The, the administration could conceivably just kind of run out the obligation clock, not do anything, and then, you know, there's certain time limits on how much, when this money has to be spent. So, so we'll see how they handle it, and, and it probably is going to be different by each program and maybe by each agency as well.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Questions or comments? Chris, I think as a general somewhat organizing principle, I understand that, that the president is perhaps reaching more broadly than other presidents have, certainly this early in the administration, has a compliant Congress to go along with that. Having said that, we are not the branch office of the federal government. We are a charter city in the state of California, and we set our own priorities on a number of items. Now, when we apply for and receive federal grants or other funding from the federal government, then there are terms and conditions that go with that, and, and we comply because we think the grant for which we applied is a meritorious grant beneficial to our community. Having said that, I think that on a number of issues, perhaps immigration most profoundly, that it is not, will not be surprising if in the near future, this body says something like, you're the federal government, we're a city government, you don't, you neither are federalizing our city government, nor are you the setter of priorities in our, our government. There's a difference between fighting with these people or obstructing these people and having our own priorities. But I think that that is likely a give and take that we're going to see for the next several years, where local jurisdictions are going to claim, I think correctly, that we are not their branch office, and we do some things where we coordinate well, and there are other things where we have a different set of priorities. Now, my guess is that that's always been the case between local governments, state governments, and federal government. I think the difference here is the threat level coming from the federal government that seems to be rather broad brush. So for example, on some issues, the federal government seems to be, or Trump, the Trump administration seems to be rather narrow casting something that, you know, if it's transportation, what they're trying to steer you to do is transportation. But there are a couple of issues where they seem to get very, very far afield, where your consequence isn't just, if it's a transportation disagreement, it isn't just on transportation, it's on everything. Or if it's on immigration, you have a disagree, it's on everything. I think that's a very different approach than what we've seen from any president, Republican or Democrat, Libertarian or Vegetarian, in the history of our country. And so that's a long-winded way of, of saying, I'm going to guess some of your other local government clients are in the same position. And do you have any advice in council strategically how we deal with that?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor. I think, I think many, many local government agencies are, are in the same boat. I, I do think that, you know, using, using immigration as an example, I think, you know, again, once again, I think that, that, you know, the courts are going to have to sort of decide and define a lot of these things. So for instance, the Department of Homeland Security put out sort of this very sweeping memo in the last few days, essentially saying, we believe there's a crisis at the southern border, and state and local law enforcement agencies, we expect you to cooperate, you know, and help and assist with this. What does that mean? What does cooperation mean? Does cooperation mean that you, you know, are aggressively trying to, to root out illegal immigration in, in the community? Or does it mean, you know, the, you know, the, the federal immigration authorities have an idea that they, this, they want to, you know, bring in these criminals, and would you help? So, and we don't know that, where that stands at, at this point right now. So, so it really is sort of a case-by-case basis, and you know, you talk about transportation again, you know, as well, you know, just sort of trying to see where, where this administration is going to, you know, put their priorities, and I, you know, and the, the other thing about, you know, the city is you guys have a lot of different priorities and a lot of different things, and, and there may be places where we can, we can align and, and look for, look for victories.
Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Murphy, thank you. If you would like to move on, Chris, always a pleasure, sir. Thank you for your good work on our behalf.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. And I'd like to introduce Amy Jenkins from Precision Advocacy, our state legislative lobbyist.
Ms. Jenkins, good afternoon, and
Good afternoon.
We welcome from a distance your partner, and she's as outstanding at this as you are, and you're very, very good at this, and thank you especially for the work to get the $2 million through the budgets. Senator Laird was enormously helpful, and your work at maneuvering through the budget process with the administration in a difficult year, and thank you so much for that.
Well, I thank you for that, Mr. Mayor and council members. I've been doing this for 30 years, and I can tell you that it's moments like that, and it's accomplishments like that that I'm most proud of, particularly when you consider the budget year that we went into last year. And what I can say is it's, it's much of the same going into the 2025-26 legislative session, so I'm here to just give you some key highlights and certainly answer any questions you may have. Let's start with the legislative session. So in December, we welcomed 34 new legislators. It was actually a historic moment. At the state legislature, we welcomed 59 women, so it is the, it's the largest group of women elected to the legislature, so that was considered somewhat historic and celebratory. The new legislature brings a diverse new set of ideas. I should note, 70% of the current 120 legislators have served four years or less, so there is a very significant education curve that we are undertaking as lobbyists, as staff, and as senior policy members like Senator Laird. So there's also another development. Unlike prior years, legislators are going to have a lower number of bills they can introduce, so 35 in a two-year session. It was 40. Some would say that's not, that's not enough of a reduction, but it will mean probably less than 2,000 a year, hopefully, which is what we tend to see on average. Let me get to the state budget, because I think that's really important, and that's going to shape your legislative program this year. When the governor unveiled his proposal on January 10th, it projected a modest $363 million surplus for the upcoming fiscal year, and that would begin July 1. However, the landscape changed, the world really changed with the, the fires. The budget did not contemplate the devastating fires in Los Angeles, and we're already seeing a lot of proposed changes, including some that were enacted just this last week. So among those changes, already the governor and the legislature have approved $2.5 billion for disaster preparedness specifically to address the devastating fires. So while the governor's January proposal is the traditional blueprint, I, I just can't emphasize enough how much I think the world has changed, and this budget is going to change. So anything I tell you now will be markedly different likely in May. But having said that, I think it's important still to emphasize what those current priorities are, and I think the legislature will do their fair best to continue to emphasize these priorities. So we'll begin with climate change and climate resilience, which has been very important. As you know, the voters passed Proposition 4, the Climate Bond, overwhelmingly passed. What this proposed budget does is it spends about, it's about a $2.7 billion in that overall climate investment that focuses on wildfire, coastal resilience, a whole host of a whole host of, um, different funding opportunities for local governments. So as your lobbyist, uh, I'm going to encourage the city very strongly to pursue grants from these funds. So we'll be monitoring over time, uh, the subcommittees that will be deliberating over this proposed spending. And we're hoping to position you for funding in the areas of wildfire preparedness, uh, coastal protection, protection of ecosystems, sea level rise. So there's a whole host of eligible funding buckets that will be contemplated. And so we'll keep staff apprised of those so that we can position you to receive some of that grant funding. Um, additionally, housing and homelessness, obviously that's going to continue to be a significant priority for the city. You've made substantial investments. Um, I will say Santa Cruz is on the map in terms of all the tremendous work that you have done, thanks to the advocacy that you engaged in last year. Um, with respect to this budget, it maintains 100 million for encampment resolution funding grants, which prioritizes jurisdictions with pro-housing designations and compliant housing elements. It does not include an additional round of HAP funding. That's the Housing Assistance and Prevention Program, um, which was unfortunate. A lot of cities and counties were hoping for another round of HAP funding. There is currently money being apportioned to jurisdictions now. Um, that existing funding that's already been approved in the budget is going to have additional accountability measures attached to it to ensure that money is spent down for its intended purposes, but no new additional rounds of HAP. So we're at round six now. Um, HAP has been a big priority for the legislature. So it's possible we could see some funding in that area. Um, in addition, there is some limited funding related to, uh, transportation and cleanup efforts. Um, but really not a lot of additional new spending or new program spending. And that is really in alignment with the governor and the legislature's focus on fiscal prudence. As you know, again, I referenced, uh, there was a substantial, uh, budget deficit going into last year. And the legislature made a number of adjustments, including tapping into the rainy day fund. And while I also mentioned a, a slight, um, budget, um, reserve this year, uh, with the fires, we are anticipating some, um, probably some shortfalls, um, when we look at the May projections. And then also too, we're looking in the out years of substantial, uh, structural deficits, anywhere between 13 and 19 million. So not to sound gloom and doom, um, what I will just simply say is I think it's really important that this city continue to engage very proactively. You have a tremendous legislative delegation that is very focused on ensuring that the city receives its fair share of funding. So, uh, really look forward to working with you as we look at the May revise and other, um, uh, developments this year and happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Let me see if there are questions of, uh, Ms. Jenkins. Ms. Jenkins, uh, I think one of the things that's interesting about this year versus last year. Last year it was a, uh, revenue-driven deficit. This year it's going to be an expenditure-driven deficit. And those are very different to solve for, it seems to me. Uh, last year was actually as much pain was spread around. It's actually an easier budget problem to solve than when you have an expenditure problem of the magnitude that LA is going to have and going to bring forward to us. So I imagine that as the ledge is moving through here with no new revenue sources, what is the ledge thinking and the Department of Finance thinking as best you know it? Uh, with regard to even early thoughts, this is going to blow up the budget. That's pretty, because even on the side over here where, uh, the Department of Finance says, well, we're going to start with a $363 million surplus. You can't possibly be that accurate on, on the budget, uh, of the state of California. It's just not possible. So they, good for them. I'm sure they can track that all back and show you how they got it. But it's a made up number. Let's just admit it's a made up number to show that you're starting, the governor's starting by proposing a, a, a surplus balanced budget going forward. That isn't going to be the case in May. So any early indications about how they're going to solve for that?
Not, not anything that is, no early indications with one exception.
Okay.
And it's, and it's one that I'm concerned about, and that relates to the bond funding. So as you, as I mentioned before, there is a substantial amount of Prop 4 funding that has been, um, proposed by the governor to be allocated for various programs that the voters intended that money go towards. What we are currently seeing is now shifts in, in prioritization of that bond funding, where it is now going to address immediate wildfire relief. And so as, as we continue to debate and identify, um, additional needs to address what has happened in Los Angeles, I am concerned that additional monies, I'm, I'm sure very, well-intended of course, but additional bond funds will be diverted to, to address that wildfire relief. And so I think, and I think the, the legislative leadership is really grappling with that. Um, in terms of long-term solutions, we're not seeing very much. There is a proposal to, um, you know, reserve, uh, put additional reserves in the rainy day fund that will require a constitutional amendment. So I think there's longer term planning, but at the onset, things are, are looking particularly bleak. Um, I didn't mention that, um, a third of the budget is also reliant on federal funds, which is substantial. So as we look at, um, potential threats to withholding federal funds, as, as recent as obviously last night's announcement, um, that's another factor that has to be considered. Um, the budget deliberations really just kicked off last week. Uh, the full Senate budget hearing, um, starts this Thursday. So I think as, as those conversations continue, we'll have a better outlook as to what the legislature and the administration is thinking. But, um, a lot of moving pieces here.
Two other questions. Uh, one is, uh, on the, the second page of your report, you talked about $100 million remains, uh, from the proposing camp and resolution fund. Then you go on to say, no other funding has been proposed for homelessness. Drill down a little bit on that.
Sure. Um, was really, it's just the encampment resolution money. So I alluded to the, um, HAP money. We've had, we've had a very generous legislature as it relates to providing one-time funding each year to fund HAP. Um, but an ongoing issue that has been communicated by local governments that has been, there is no sustainable revenue stream to address our unhoused population in California. Um, so that, the same with this particular budget, no new HAP funding. I think the legislature will have something to say about that as they deliberate the January proposal. But again, there's all these other considerations, uh, geopolitical concerns, the fire, et cetera, that's going to, um, also be part of that conversation. I would note there was a bill, uh, introduced last week. I haven't had a chance to fully review it, but it's ACA 4. It would be a constitutional amendment. It's being put forward by a San Bernardino County Legislature Assembly Member Jackson. And what this bill would do is it would set aside 5% general fund to support, uh, homelessness and housing programs. So I think that's something that has gotten a lot of attention, even though it was just introduced Friday, Friday afternoon. And so we'll continue to monitor that and see how it progresses through the legislature. But that is a solution that, um, is a new solution that's just been identified.
I suspect, uh, not trying to get too far out over my skin. I suspect what you're going to hear a little later here is a lot of conversation about housing and homeless. So you also indicate in your report that there is no new housing money. In addition to no new homeless money, there's no new housing money.
That's correct.
So, you know, it's pretty fascinating because, you know, the governor and the legislature, especially the governor, I think, made a lot of noise for a lot of years about the importance of these two issues. And I'm not disrespecting him. I think he did a lot of good work on that. But it is interesting that it's now being, these are both being dropped like hot rocks at this point by the governor. And so I'm, I'm, I'm interested in what that conversation is about because there's an awful lot of Democrats. Uh, you know, there's, there's 62 Democrats in the assembly out of the 80 members. So there's going to be a lot of folks very concerned about these two issues. So let's go to the housing issue. What's your best sense of what's going on with that? Why, why is the governor retreating from these two issues?
Well, I think, I think there has been, um, a lot of discussion about, well, at least as he has framed it. Uh, the, the local governments have not spent down the housing funding that has been allocated to them, or it has not been repurposed or spent in a manner that, um, fully addresses the critical housing shortage in those communities. So I think from, I never want to speak for the administration, but my sense is, is this is a reaction to what the governor believes is, is a lack of accountability on the part of some jurisdictions. And so the pendulum has swung back. So that's one thought that I have. Um, in terms of the legislature, this is not new in terms of, of not allocating or, or budgeting money for HAP, for instance. To your point, the legislature has been very motivated and engaged and wanting to make additional critical investments in housing. And so the legislature will have this time between now and June to, to modify the budget. And I would imagine there will be some additional investments in housing. And it will be interesting to see how this new constitutional amendment proposal, um, is perceived. Uh, so far it's been very, very positive in the legislature with the introduction of that, that constitutional amendment. So we'll continue to see how things develop. But you're very, you're correct in saying we have a very pro-housing, very pro-homeless investment, uh, legislature. So I, I, I expect to see changes in the budget.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor, has a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Your questions, um, made me think of a question that I do have. Um, you talked about housing and homelessness. How about mental health and behavioral health? What does the landscape look like? Um, there's all this legislation that's been passed, right? The Consideration Bill, CARE Court, um, but not a whole lot of dollars in terms of how we can implement them locally. Uh, I know that that's really falls underneath the purview of the county, but it impacts every single one of us and impacts us here at the city.
There, there are some, so thank you for the question and I probably will have to refer to my notes. But I, there are some substantial investments in the implementation of the CARE Act as well as Prop 1, which was the, um, change to the Mental Health Services Act. It's now the Behavioral Health Services Act and a reallocation of that funding. That was a proposition approved in March of 2024. I believe with respect to Prop 1, there is roughly 94 million set aside to support counties in the implementation of Prop 1 and then additional CARE Act funding that's, uh, proposed to be spent over the next three years. So there is an effort to, to fund, um, investments and, or to fund those critical priorities that the governor and the legislature enacted. Um, but again, no new programming. It's really just implement what was already approved.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor, if I could just quickly, uh, add to Amy's comments, uh, just a reminder for the council, uh, our city staff team did apply for a really narrow window of, uh, round one, Prop 1 funding, uh, for the vision we have at 125 Coral Street as part of the Navigation Center. There will be other windows of opportunity where we'll be keeping a close eye on that. But we did take that opportunity to leverage as part of a smaller, uh, competitive pool of grants for this first round. So stay tuned. We're waiting to hear back on those.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, yes, please, please.
Thank you so much for your updates and reports this early on. It's really helpful as, you know, we hear what's happening and the landscape. And, you know, in our agenda packet, I also really appreciate, um, the layout of our, um, priorities and really specific because I know the words homeless and, and housing are thrown around a lot. And, um, I think it's really important to drill down on with underneath each of those categories, what it, what that means. And, um, housing and affordable housing, how about affordable housing ownership opportunities? More Measure O units and things like that getting really drilled down in specific. And, um, under homelessness, um, I really appreciate seeing some of the mental health and substance use, um, expansion priorities and expansion for permanent supportive housing, expansion, um, uh, for, uh, supports around basic food and hygiene and, and needs and, um, services for everyone. And, you know, you mentioned Prop 1 and CARES Court and, you know, we're, we're, we're waiting to see how, how that all rolls out and impacts. Um, but there's more beyond that. That's just scratching the surface. And it's really hard as a city, uh, representative to our constituents and community and the needs, where, you know, a lot of these services are outside a municipality's scope. Yet we have to advocate for those needs. And I am proud of our pro-housing designation and our certified housing element. On the housing side, we are building, you know, a diverse housing stock. Um, I know we just formed a, um, housing ad hoc committee. So thank you to the three council members that will be serving on that. And I really hope, um, to see, um, some more like subcategories under the topic housing. What does that mean? And homeownership opportunities and the opportunity for our marginalized and communities that never had access to build generational wealth. And, um, I think it's more and more important that, um, from the legislative side too, to keep that in mind. And if you've seen anything in those, um, categories at all at the state level.
Well, thank you for one. Where I'm always looking for ways to fine tune and improve the updates. So your feedback is, is helpful. Um, we'll continue to drill down on that. The one thing I can say, um, is that the budget, the January budget proposal is really a blueprint. It doesn't provide a lot of specificity. However, what we are going to begin to see is the release of budget trailer bills. So that will really start around February 1st. Uh, I see the mayor's nodding, uh, February 1st. And that really is the implementation language that supports the administration's vision. And so I think as we start to review some of those proposals, we will have a better perspective on, on some of, how that, some of that funding will more specifically be allocated, at least as proposed. So that will be helpful.
That because, you know, in the past, also around homelessness, there have been some state level bills introduced. For example, um, homelessness implies without a home. But really I've seen where we have some community members that are unhoused because of substance use or because of mental health challenges. And, um, there might be resources available, but they decline. And because state law allows that choice. And so I know like there have been previous bills, um, proposed to expand the definition of gravely disabled or to expand this or that. And I think those specifics for us are really important to, um, follow and understand. It's such a web of everything and that drill down is so key. So thank you. Appreciate it.
And we'll, we'll keep trying to, to do that. Um, but appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, are there questions or further questions or comments or inquiries to Ms. Jenkins?
Yes. I just want to say thank you. Um, I appreciate, I appreciate the holistic view and some of the levels of specificity. And I know a lot of work went into this. And I think if we want to like revamp or look at different processes for bringing the, the program forward for next year, I'm happy to collaborate with others. But I know a lot of work went into this piece that we have here. And so, um, thank you for all of, all of everybody that contributed a little bit of this. I do echo, uh, Councilwoman Brunner's comments in regards to addressing kind of the root causes around homelessness, both at the federal and the state level, just because, um, if, if you offer somebody a house, but they don't have the rest of their life kind of together, it's not going to work out. So I, I liked a lot of the stuff that was in here. So I just, I, I want to thank you, everybody for all the work.
Thank you. Uh, let me ask Ms. Murphy, Ms. Murphy, uh, Ms. Jenkins, thank you very much. And please thank Nicole as well for us. Wonderful work for us. Ms. Murphy, it, uh, I am, uh, wondering if what we might do at this point. I know this is unusual to take a break in the midst of an item, but been here, you know, a couple and a half hours. So I think without objection, what we're going to do is we're just going to take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at five after three. We will pick this item up where we are right now. We stand in recess. Following our afternoon recess, the Santa Cruz City Council is back in order. We do have a, a majority. We do not need to, to call the roll again. All council members are present. Ms. Murphy, we were in the middle of your item. Thank you for your forbearance and please proceed.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So after having heard from our, our legislative advocates, what I'd like to do, I'll do is, is bring it back home to the, to the council to really then hone in on what is it, are your top priorities that you would like for the legislative lobbyists and your staff to really focus on. It doesn't mean to the detriment of anything else. All of the, the six area of issue areas still encompass a wide variety of, of items that we will still be working and advocating for. But just to hone in on those top two or three. And as you can see, we were very successful last year when we, when we undertook that new focus. So that's what I'd like to ask for the council do, to do today is to develop what those are, those top two or three, then what we will do and reaffirm our, the platform issues that we've identified. Then we'll, we'll put these all together in a final format with a final review with our advocates, the department heads, and we'll bring it back to you for the next council meeting for the adoption. Thank you very much.
Ms. Murphy, thank you very much. And obviously, thank, as we've said already, thank you to Chris, Amy and Nicole for their work at the federal and state level on our behalf and your good work as well. Thank you for that trip. Sacramento last year, which Councilmember Newsom was on as well and was quite successful with regard to our, our shelter funding issue. Matters back before the body here, we will, let me see if you have questions. We'll then go out to the public and then we'll come back here for action. Let me see if there are questions, comments that we have before we ask for the public. Okay, very good. Members of the public interested in making comment on our 2025 legislative agenda. This will be the opportunity for you to do so. If anybody's with us in chambers or anyone is online, do we have someone online? We'll take Mr. Young on this item, sir. Okay, very good. We'll go to the person online, person online. Good afternoon and welcome to the city council member, meeting. We are on our legislative program. Good afternoon.
Right. This is Garrett. Hey, I see the city managers asking for the council to approve three focus areas for city lobbying out of a platform of a great many. Obviously, nothing like creating that kind of a homework assignment ever gets done in just one council meeting. But all that is presented here is last year's similar final document, I assume, to rubber stamp again, perhaps with alterations done behind the scenes or not. Explain if I am interpreting this wrong, but this seems to indicate that the platform is pre-authorizing staff to advocate for unknown future legislation without council review or approval of the actual early stage legislation, especially troubling, I assume, without public review or comment either. The accompanying Legislative Action Guide isn't offered for review, but my general opinion is unelected bureaucrats should not be in the business of legislation, sans the people's elected council real time direction and final approval of anything, and delegating and pre-delegating authority to unelected regulatory bodies is a significant systemic defect throughout the American politic. I do not agree with all the bullet points of the 2024 legislative priorities as outlined. For instance, any attempts to make Santa Cruz a deeper cesspool of government dependence based on socialist funding ideas, for instance, of housing would not make my list. I will mention, I agree with the public letter writer, there is a doctor shortage in Santa Cruz. Sutter has lost doctors, reassigned me twice without my choice, and the doctor I was finally assigned is far away because there aren't any ones locally accepting new patients. On homelessness response, I'd like to see that more jail space and jail space here. South County isn't here, although sure, why should this city be the criminal repository for the whole county? It said people need to hit bottom before kicking drugs and sobering up in jail would sure seem to be that bottom stop on the road to recovery if they're not willing to clean themselves up another way. Housing first is just placating addiction and exposing Santa Cruz as a destiny for those in search of supportive cesspool of government dependence, as if you can solve the extraordinary state homelessness at our expense anyway. Advocating for legislation to go harder after drug traffickers and producers doesn't seem to be any priority on any list. There are 46 mentions of fund in this document. We all know that's the real intent of legislative advocacy, isn't it? There is not enough time to express how off the mark some of the bullet points of sustainability are, but I mentioned, quote, eliminate natural gas use is the most obvious total misallocation of legislative focus and should be removed pronto. While, quote, provide stable and fair electricity rates, fees, blah, blah, sounds good. I rate your efforts so far as a fail, as in how come Santa Clara electricity rates are half of ours? And electric power availability is a yo-yo. During the last power outage, I was enjoying my gas powered hot water and shower, driving my gas powered car, cooking and heating the house on a cold morning with my gas powered stove, while all electric others were freezing their hot meal hungry blanks off. Quote, support bills that restrict access to firearms and ammunition is a big, uh, Second Amendment forbids, that wasn't three minutes. Come on. Where was the clock? That's a, that's not, I don't know. I don't think that's three minutes. I don't have to tell you. Anyway, you know, which civics dropout put that in there?
Thank you very much. Mr. Young, good afternoon again, sir. Welcome.
Yeah, hello. I appreciate what Garrett had to say. I mean, tried to pay attention to this as much as possible. Seemed like the homeless situation was brought up quite a bit. Um, where to begin? Why did I come here? Start coming here five and a half years ago? Because of the military frequency weapons in civilian locations, we are all homeless. Our homes are not secure and they are not private. We may learn a little bit from the homeless who are getting by with less. You know, there is a lot of really interesting information. I mean, I'm personally going to be affected by the loans and grants, I think. I hope not, but expect to be. And I appreciate the information because I wasn't aware of that. But as far as this city's budget, you know, Santa Cruz is not an island. It's located in the state of California, which is not an island. It was 200 years ago. Anyway, those directed energy weapons fires in LA, there are some people that have compiled that those damages are over a trillion dollars. We have a national deficit of at least 34 trillion. And it's my understanding that the insurance companies have funds to pay off 24 billion, one fortieth of it. So if there's something that's going to really cause an economic reset, this could be it. So what is really going on? And, you know, things could just change in moments. So what really can we do? I mean, there's one, there's a lot of people I track week to week. And I was made aware of that there is an alternate dollar that's being used everywhere on the planet except the United States. So when all of these frauds get their get out of jail free cards and the slate is wiped clean and we have these digital pocketbooks, which are only as useful as, let's say, that building less than a year ago, when I tried to walk in at 7:45 in the morning and there was a brick in the door because none of the five people inside, their electronic key didn't work. So our electronics are only as good as when they work. And they certainly are not secure. So.
Ten seconds. I know you.
About 10 seconds. I thought I had three minutes.
No, you're doing fine. You got 10 more seconds. You're doing fine.
Well, you know, it's just, I'm glad that I stayed. I mean, I wish I, as I said, I could have jumped up to kind of, you know, I'm just glad you commented on my comments. Obviously, I wouldn't be here if I didn't actually care. That's enough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else online, Ms. Bush? Matters back before the body. Pleasure of the body. Count, remember Newsom.
I'd like to make the motion to identify the top three legislative priorities as those that are outlined in the agenda packet, homelessness response, affordable housing and infrastructure, and determine the legislative platform issues as those six areas that are identified in the general report as well.
There's a motion.
I'll second, I'll second to have, and I have.
We'll be right with you. Motion and a second. Gentlemen, may I open on this motion?
Thank you, Mayor. So I first want to thank staff for all the work on this. And I want to thank, I also want to thank our, our legislative delegation, delegation to our federal legis, delegation and our state delegation. I see these priorities as, you know, top of mind priorities on the minds of voters, especially homelessness response and affordable housing and infrastructure is also a, seems to be a top priority for the city as we have seen over the last two winters as especially our coastal infrastructure and resiliency of our coastal infrastructure. So I support this direction and the legislative platform as well. And again, just want to thank our congressional delegation for their great work.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor is recognized.
Thank you. Yeah, if you take a look at our agendas over the last year, and if we did a by hand tally, I would, I would suspect that these three items are the ones that come up. So it does make sense that we continue to prioritize homelessness, affordable housing and infrastructure as our top legislative priorities. I'm not sure in terms of process, Mayor. I had some added special, specific direction under the legislative platforms. Is this the appropriate time? So there were the legislative priority areas, and those are the three. And then there were the eight platform areas. And so I had some thoughts, additional thoughts on some of the platform areas. I'll just kind of go down my list if that works. Under homelessness, um, you know, I kind of brought this up in my questions and comments, just that we track further funding around behavioral health and mental health. I appreciate Ms. Jenkins, the, the.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Let's just see how we can proceed here.
Sure.
I'm, am I correct in thinking what you would like to do at this point with your comments is convert these into additional detail in our program? Are you amending the motion?
I'm not amending the motion. It's additional detail for the, our program. Correct.
So this is more making this statement rather than changing the motion? Is this so our staff will know?
Yes.
This level of detail that you are interested?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Motion as it stands, as Councilmember Newsom made it.
Thank you, Madam Vice.
Thanks for clarifying. Yeah. So this is the detail that would go into the legislative report. So under homelessness, additional direction for us to track behavioral health, mental health funding for implementation of the legislation that's been passed. There's, there's a bullet point around looking at how funding is allocated. And I would really like for us to pay close attention to per capita rate, looking at per capita rate rather than point in time count as a possibility for local jurisdictions to get funding. I mean, we have been, we've had one of the top per capita rates in the whole entire state. We've done really well with our pit counts, thanks to the amazing work of our homelessness response team. And sometimes you get, we get, anyhow, I, I think the funding allocation methodology is flawed at the state and at the federal level for that matter. And that's something to, I'd like us to watch closely. Under housing, actually, I think, like, Mayor, if you want to touch on some of the ideas there, under community. Under community well-being and public safety, one of the bullet points is technological advancement. And I'd like us to specifically name AI as what, as a part of that. I'd like to propose that, that a bullet point is added under, still under community well-being and public safety to, and, and Ms. Murphy, I do have these typed up, and I can send them to you, that we support initiatives and legislation that decrease use and consumption of harmful substances and products for youth and vulnerable populations. One specific one that comes up is active hemp ingredients. I know the state legislature is working on that. Sugar-sweet beverages, for example. So there's a number of those. And then another one, under community well-being, public safety, is to uphold and support existing and new legislation that protects marginalized populations such as immigrants and LGBTQ+. You mentioned e-bike. If we can add that as an area to keep an eye on under public safety and community well-being. And then just one last one, under economic vitality, there's a bullet point that says oppose federal preemption policy, and I'd like to either add an additional bullet point or add to that, oppose state preemption of local authority to generate revenue. So add that, add state in addition to federal. Those are my additional thoughts for the platform.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember O'Hara?
Thank you, and I appreciate the Vice Mayor's comments as well. Now, I kind of went into today's session feeling like I had a dearth of information. The presentations have been very helpful. Thank you very much. You know, the way I kind of see our legislative platform and set of priorities is maybe a little nuanced, just given the fact that I really think we're at a pivot point where we have to focus a lot more attention on what's happening at the state and federal level. I don't want to be just on the receiving end of, of legislation that we will be reacting to. I mean, I think we have had a history over the last few years, especially around housing legislation, where we are very reactive and trying to manage towards that, and it's, and it's caused a lot of capacity drain for the organization. So getting ahead of that, I think, will be very important. I had the opportunity of working with the mayor twelve years ago on a city initiative, of which I think on the first meeting, he likened this Public Safety Task Force process to an expanding and then a contracting universe, where I took a lot of quotes from the mayor, then, then Treasurer of the county at the time, that I continue to use. I think at this point, we're in an expanding universe. We're, we're learning. We're learning about what's on the horizon from the legislative perspective. Just over the weekend, I looked at what bills are being introduced at the state. There are so many relevant bills that are very consistent with what we talk about every day, but are, like, they need to be looked at, right? In terms of their impact to us, if we want to advocate, what, if we're going to be for or against, et cetera. So during this learning phase, I think having a position statement about what our values are, which is that platform, which I think the Vice Mayor just articulated some ads to, I think is going to be really important for us because what is going to happen at the federal level, we are going to be reacting to probably week by week for the short term. And I, so with that in mind, I have some additions as well, which could be in the form of a friendly amendment or could be similar to the Vice Mayor.
Let me ask real quickly, do you have a preference on that? Which way you'd like to go on it?
I don't have a preference, as long as whatever I'm, I can transmit to the...
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Another point I have is that I worked with Councilmember Golda and Trigero on this, and I want to make sure that I don't step on stuff that you would like to, either of you would like to talk about. So I'll just, shall I just focus on mine? Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Okay. So in, in addition to the comments of the Vice Mayor, I wanted to touch on a couple additional items for particularly the public safety and community well-being section. And we, we will have more conversations about this, but I do think we need to have, under public safety and community well-being, a theme around immigration, specifically support for undocumented immigrants, protecting immigrant rights, advocating for policies that uphold the rights of undocumented immigrants, ensuring access to essential services such as healthcare, education, and legal assistance, court legislation that limits local law enforcement's involvement in federal immigration enforcement, fostering trust with immigrant communities, possibly establishing support, immigrant support offices. I know we have local nonprofits that work on that, so, but making sure that we're really clear as to our values around that. In addition to that, under public safety and community well-being, I'd like a section on wildfire protection, particularly enhancing wildfire prevention and preparedness, support legislation that enhances wildfire prevention, preparedness, and response efforts, particularly in high-risk areas, advocate for policies that promote sustainable land management practices, and the development of fire-resistant infrastructure, which we are working on as a city. Address homeowners' insurance challenges. Advocate for policies that ensure the availability and affordability of homeowners' insurance for wildfire-prone areas. Support initiatives that incentivize insurers to continuing offering coverage in high-risk zones, such as implementing wildfire mitigation measures and home hardening techniques. Promote transparency in insurance practices, ensuring homeowners are informed about policy changes and non-renewal decisions. Thank you for your patience, because I did want to make sure we got, I got all of this out here. In addition to that, in particular, as we have heard from the discussion today, funding priorities around wildfire mitigation projects. So pursuing state and federal grants to fund wildfire mitigation projects, including vegetation management, community education programs, and emergency response enhancements. Seek resources to support the development and implementation of community wildfire protection plans. And then under homeowners' insurance support, advocate for funding to assist homeowners in implementing fire-resistant measures, potentially reducing insurance premiums, and potentially supporting the establishment of a state-backed insurance program to provide coverage options for residents in high-risk areas. After the L.A. fires, I have to imagine that this is top of mind for many, many of our community members as homeowners' insurance becomes more, more, more and more bleak in terms of access. That's it for me, and I will yield to the council members that I had the opportunity to work with on this process.
Thank you. And let me see if there are other comments. Okay, I can go through whatever order you would like. So we'll, we'll go, we'll go with Councilmember Golda, then we'll go Councilmember Brunner, and then Councilmember Trigero, if that works for all of you. That's how I sort of saw the, no, okay.
Thank you. I do appreciate everybody's additions and, you know, ability to listen to what the community is kind of asking for. Like Councilmember Brunner said, when I was up in Sacramento on Thursday for the Public Safety Policy Committee, we identified three areas that our Public Safety Policy Committee at CalCities is going to work on, and that's going to be exactly that, the wildfire insurance issue is going to be one. The second is going to be kind of the intersection between law enforcement, law enforcement and homeless response. And the third will be looking at how are we going to implement Prop 36? And so I think there's different leaders from around the state kind of addressing those issues, and hopefully it'll make its way through other bodies in the state. But I appreciate everything that's been said, and I don't really have any additional things to add at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brunner.
Thank you. I had a couple of detailed sub as well, and I think I, I mentioned kind of that overview and some of my comments and question earlier. Under public safety and well-being, already it's been mentioned, but especially protections around marginalized populations, transgender, LGBTQ+, immigrants, and seniors. That's been really clear, and our county health data is showing, you know, one in three over age sixty-five by 2030. And, and so it also intersects with housing. So when I talked earlier about the housing as a whole, that's those subcategories, senior housing, fixed incomes. What does that look like? What does that look like for someone in recovery? For someone who's just coming out of homelessness? So housing and all of those elements and homeownership, I really wanted to make sure those, those sub-points were under housing. And then again, emphasizing the alignment with the CalCities Policy Committee that I'm on and the emergency preparedness is, is universally, from all the city leaders across the state, was the top priority for our work plan, and I believe here it applies as well. We've had many comments around fire. We've experienced tornadoes and swells and, and, and so that emergency preparedness piece as well. And with insurance, again, I know it's, insurance is popping up everywhere. Let's not forget renters' insurance, not just homeowners' insurance.
The comments at this point. Councilmember.
Just to kind of back clean up, thank you, because I did have a, one other, a few other additions. So I agree with Councilmember Brunner about the support for fixed-income seniors, especially around promoting community programs that address social isolation and enhance quality of life, which I know that we have many programs here. But I think that safety net at the beginning of life and towards the end of life is going to be a critical piece of our legislative advocacy for the next four years. In addition to that, childcare, making sure that we are promoting policies around access to childcare, support of childcare workers, and youth programming. So ensuring that we have access and advocacy around increase for investment in youth, youth programming, remote education, health, and social development, providing access to safe and inclusive spaces for youth engagement, funding after-school programs, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate or discussion? Hold on just a minute. Without further debate or discussion, just a couple of quick things. One is, remember, our community did just pass Measure Q, which is, at least intended to make a substantial contribution towards the wildfire prevention work, but that didn't give me enough. If we end up with a wildfire on the scale of the winds and whatnot, I think we were actually pretty lucky in our city that the CZU fire was where it was essentially, as opposed to, you know, lightning strikes in the Pogonip and a forty mile an hour, fifty mile an hour wind, we might not be sitting here, right? We, we just don't know. But something's being done here locally. I want to come in two other things. A lot of talk here about our, and action by this body over the years on housing affordability and homelessness, and I will shamelessly then promote that there is a petition in the community right now you can sign, which is intended to make very, very substantial progress on both of those issues. One other issue, I don't think it's any surprise here that we are settling on our high priorities around homelessness, housing, and infrastructure, and then a lot of what's being said here filters into that. Imagining that that is what this, what our body would do here on this item, some of us began working a while ago on legislation which would essentially do the following, and I think it's very consistent with what I imagine will be a vote in support of this legislative program. But it says this, that the governor and the legislature have taken a rather broad-brush approach to both housing and homelessness. They seem to have lost their interest in the homelessness issue to a very considerable degree, for whatever set of reasons. But they're still very interested in housing. And I think that from 2017 to now, they've taken generally this approach. We're going to write bills for every jurisdiction, whether they're performing well, not performing well, whether they're hitting their arena targets, not hitting the ring. We're going to sort of treat local government as if, basically, they are not doing their part fast enough, deep enough, et cetera, on the housing front. Maybe the homelessness, definitely on the housing front. And so that's led to these hundred and twenty-five bills in the legislature since 2017 that have, quote, "poured down the barriers to development." And that, I understand their approach to that. Where you stand depends on where you sit. If you're sitting in the state legislature, that's how you see it. And so you adopt bills that way. If you sit where we sit, you see this somewhat differently because irrespective of what any other jurisdiction has done, we met our arena requirements, we got a certified housing element of our general plan, we got a pro-housing designation. We're, at least there is effort in the community to try to put affordable housing and homelessness funding measure on the ballot in our city. So I think we are distinguishable anyway from others who don't have all those virtues lined up, since the state has been encouraging the removal of barriers to development. So it seems to make sense then, as they're five years into this, to say, let's try to do a little distinguishing here. If you're a, have a certified housing element to your general plan, you have a pro-housing designation, you've met all your arena requirements in the last go-round, and you're looking like you're pretty good on, on the next round in all categories of affordability, then and only then, because I'll tell you what we're getting down to. We're getting down to less than five percent of the cities in the state of California, probably closer to three or four percent who meet all of those. But if you are, the legislature and the governor couldn't have possibly meant that cities who fall into those categories are laggards who are not doing their job to get things done. So if you meet all those criteria, then you can get a little bit of relief from some of these requirements. Not a lot, but a little bit. And I think this is the way we can, as a, as a city, do a better job, frankly, of also representing neighborhoods, because we get it. We're going to have to authorize the building of several thousand new housing units, hopefully as much as we can downtown. But there is fear every time, you know, a food bin or something out on Hagaman and SoCal, or whatever it is, comes up. We get asked, can't you do something about this? Can't you lighten, lighten the impact on the existing neighborhood some way? And our answer so far has been, no, we can't, because that's true. But why not? See if what we can do is reward the good actors in local government a bit. Not exempt us from everything or anything close to that, but is there a reasonable place for us to be? So members of this body, as well as our, our staff, our local government lobbyists, folks with Lead California Cities and others, we've been working on this, and we have gone to legislative council. We have a bill draft submitted to them yesterday evening to legislative council. We were authorized to go to legislative council by Assemblymember Mark Berman up in, in Menlo Park, Palo Alto area. He's not agreed to carry it. He's agreed to allow us to go to ledge council and get a bill draft. And I think that bill draft's very sound, very solid, very responsible in getting to the issue that I just talked about. So I think this goes to the question, among other things, of if we adopt this policy today as it stands, are members going to have to, you can't work on anything unless you, you know, you came back to the council with a bill, and then we decide whether that bill... Now, it seems to me that if we've got these interest areas, different council members, and different things, I think that's come out here. This is, not everybody has, even within our top priorities, sees the same way, everything that needs to be done. So I think this gives us that flexibility. We have, we will have an adopted plan, and we can do the kind of things we're talking about here, about moving forward with bills. I will caution you to, to keep in mind, bill introduction deadline is the end of February. We're getting real close. So if you want to do a bill, going to have to hop on it. Thank you very much, everybody who's been involved in this. Any other comments? Debate or discussion? Councilmember Golda?
Sorry. I do have one final thought after you said that, because I do think there's a big push and pull in this community in terms of housing. And a lot of people feel that we do need housing built all over the state. And a lot of people feel we're at capacity, sort of here in Santa Cruz, in terms of some of our critical infrastructure, including, as someone noted, like hospitals, roads, whatever that may be. And so in any lobbying, I think it's just really important to acknowledge the good work that is going on here and how we really have... I mean, I totally credit the whole staff with meeting those Reno target allocations and even building some of our own housing. And I know that's not the case all over the state. So I just think that they should go for more of an equity approach instead of a quality approach in terms of some of the ever and carrot or sticking carrot, whatever the expression is. And so any way that we can advocate to kind of pat ourselves on the back and maybe have a little bit more control over some of the projects that come before us, that would be something I think a lot of the community and even the council would would support.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. Further debate or discussion? Madam Clerk, let's call the room.
Councilmember Trigaro.
Aye.
Bruner.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Holder.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Keely.
Aye. Motion passes. And so, thank you all very much. Ms. Jenkins, we'll see you in Sacramento. We are on Item seventeen and we will be going through Items seventeen through twenty nine are appointments to various bodies that this body makes. And we changed the procedure a couple of years ago as we were transitioning to full district representation, where on many of the commission's individual council members essentially will be making appointments so that they can align their work with their planning commissioner, their water commissioner, their public works commissioner and so on, representing their district. How we will do this today is that we have a large packet of applications by commission. We typically, and we will do this today, Ms. Bush will lead us through this one item at a time, asking for nominations, and then there will be votes and we'll move on to the next one. Madam Clerk, thank you for your good work and Ms. Wood's good work. We turn this over to you.
Thank you. I just want to confirm, because I know that there are some applicants who would like to speak. Are we doing public comment before or after?
Well, I think we've got to do it before we make appointments. So I'm very good. Thank you. If there's anyone here wishes to address us for a couple of minutes on your application, please come up and do so. No, no, just one at a time, though. Good afternoon.
Hello, Mayor Keely and council members. My name is Katie Ferraro and I am seeking appointment to the Equal Employment Opportunity Committee. I am a current city employee in the Economic Development and Housing Department on the Business Services Team. I recently joined the City of Santa Cruz team after an extensive time working in marketing and business development, seeking to do work that would have a larger impact on my community. A big part of my career was working for a small nonprofit called Stoked, which taught life skills to underserved high school students in Los Angeles, New York and Chicago. Ninety-nine percent of my students were Hispanic, mostly first generation college students. One of my favorite things about the program was leading a cohort of students that were tasked with creating their own team business concept and giving them the opportunity to learn about about jobs that were available for them that they may not have known could have been for them. I am passionate about supporting diverse businesses and organization and giving a variety of of people a seat at the table. Outside of my work with the city, I get to use my writing expertise, supporting grant writing and seeking for a nonprofit called Skate Like a Girl, which creates safe spaces for women identifying in LGBT QI+ individuals in skateboarding. This work is even more important to me now with all the events that have unfolded in the last week and are likely to continue in years to come. I myself was given the opportunity to serve the public through the local government with my background, when my background was non-traditional to most public servants. It's been an honor to serve the City of Santa Cruz Business Community and I would be grateful to be considered to serve in a larger capacity as a member of the Equal Opportunity Equal Employment Opportunity Committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ferraro. Anyone else wish, good afternoon, come forward, please. Welcome.
Detective Bix, that. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name's Elizabeth Madrigal. I live in Seabright in District Two. I'm just really glad to be here with you all today. I applied for the Transportation and Public Works Commission, sole application just to that body. And the reason for doing so is I'm really passionate for the ways in which people are able to get around our city, whether they live here, they're visiting. My niece will, all of my family lives in the Salinas Valley, but my niece loves visiting Santa Cruz and she gets to go around the bus, walk around the city with her aunt. So just looking for ways to make that more amenable. And I think too, just, well, since I've been living here, have hung out with my friends. Good number of them have disabilities and one in particular who navigates our city in a wheelchair. And I think that experience too has just opened my eyes to the different ways that people get around and what we can do to make our city more equitable in that sense. So yeah, just really pleased to put my application forward and look forward to the results of the appointments.
Well, thank you so much for being here. Anyone else? All right. Do we have anybody online who's an applicant?
We do have one, yes.
Well, let's hear from that person. Good afternoon and welcome to the council meeting.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Lola Quiroga. I currently serve on the Transportation and Public Works Commission and I'm a student at UCSC. I am up for reappointment, but I did just want to advocate for the appointment of Elizabeth Madrigal to the Commission, Transportation and Public Works Commission. Elizabeth's passion for transportation in our city and county and her expertise in affordable housing development makes her uniquely qualified for our commission. As you know, housing and transit are inextricably linked and Elizabeth's experience would fill a gap on the commission as we're navigating new housing developments citywide and reviewing our objective standards. It would be really useful to have someone with the lived experience of reviewing developments on our commission. And Elizabeth is also a well-known transit advocate in our community. I know Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson and Councilmember Newsom can attest to this. Elizabeth has attended nearly every Santa Cruz Metro Board meeting this past year and has fiercely advocated for better transit access across the city, particularly in the east side, where she lives in Councilmember Bruner's district. And her knowledge extends beyond Santa Cruz County to the broader Bay Area and Monterey Bay region. And she has a really comprehensive understanding of the best practices in infrastructure for transportation throughout our region. I'll briefly advocate for myself. Since being appointed to the TPWC, I've interned with Santa Cruz Metro's Planning Department, where I've collaborated on transit boarding islands for the Bay Corridor with the City of Santa Cruz. I've worked with UCSC and Metro to evaluate a turnaround point for the east side connector from UCSC to Capitola Mall to bring back that route. And I've worked on creating bus schedules to align with school start and dismissal times to boost our youth ridership. And I've also started a new role on UCSC's Advisory Committee for Campus Transportation and Parking, where I've worked on projects to reduce campus congestion and promote sustainable transportation, like bus, a new bus pilot program for for Science Hill and reinstating new bike shuttle times for our off-campus bike shuttle. And I think my unique perspective as a car-free student and bus rider has really allowed me to advocate for key projects that have come up this past year on the commission, like traffic calming on Western Drive, the transit-only lanes on Front Street and the protected bike lanes on Upper Bay Drive, which impact student commuters. And I've also grown as a leader by learning from my fellow commissioners and their diverse experiences. And if I'm reappointed, I'll continue to advocate for equitable transit by and pedestrian infrastructure. And I hope I can do so alongside Elizabeth. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much for your application. Thank you. Ms. Bush, anyone else? First online, good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Leah Khan and I am an applicant for the Sister Cities Committee. It's a real pleasure for me to submit my application and for your review. I, as a very steadfast and excited Santa Cruz citizen, believe that I can help promote the mission of the Sister Cities Committee that promote international understanding, cultural exchange, friendship, both globally and locally. So thank you so much for your review.
Thank you so much. Anyone else, Ms. Bush? Good. We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon. Welcome to the City Council Meeting.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor. My name is Ryan Meckel. I currently serve on the Transportation and Public Works Commission. And while I'm not up for appointment myself, I would like to advocate for the appointment of Carlina Rose, who has applied. She lives on the east side of Santa Cruz and I had the pleasure of speaking with her personally about her qualifications for this role. She's a planning and environmental professional who has no other interests in this, I mean, as far as politics goes than serving the city on this commission. She has a deep, deep passion for making the city more accessible to folks and has the professional's experience and the personal lived experience to make it possible to bring those skills to this commission. I think she would be a great appointment and I advocate for that to happen. I would also like to put in a good word for Ron Goodman for reappointment, Lola Quiroga and Elizabeth Madrigal as well for a new appointment. These are all folks I know personally and can personally just testify that they are great and knowledgeable about transportation in the city and ways to make it better. So thank you for the time.
Well, thank you very much for calling in. We appreciate that. Anyone else, Ms. Bush? We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Meeting.
Hello, my name is Carlina Rose and I am an applicant for the Transportation Commission. Thank you, Ryan, for that lovely introduction. I'm very passionate about sustainable transportation and have a master's degree in transportation planning. I've worked as the Transportation Coordinator for the University of San Jose. And I would really love an opportunity to serve the Santa Cruz community of which I live. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Ms. Bush?
No, no one with their hand.
With their hand raised. Very good. Matters back before the body. And Ms. Bush, would you lead us through? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we continue, I do want to just make a note that the appointments for the Children's Fund Oversight Committee, as well as the Commission for the Prevention of Violence Against Women, will be held on February eleventh as opposed to this evening.
Not November eleventh?
Okay, the first commission, it's the Arts Commission, and just to throw this out there, we had a really healthy amount of applicants this year. So it was a lot of work for Julia, but it was great to see. So the Arts Commission, we have three openings with Councilmember Trigaro, Bruner and Vice Mayor Kalentari nominations. All three have terms ending January thirty first, twenty twenty nine. So starting with Councilmember Trigaro.
May I ask a question first? I'm so sorry. I was just hoping that the clerk could explain the process for the public, because I know I was lobbying to vote for this person, vote for that person. I just, I think clarity and process for us and for the public before we get started.
Yes, we, council shifted the appointment process to align with districting as well as their term. So in order to do that, we had to stagger who appoints when. That way we didn't have vacancies happening at the same time, creating a quorum issue. And then their term will also align with your term. So then the next council member that comes in will have their own appointee. So that's why, that's why we're staggering it. You, you, you don't. You can approve it. You don't, we're not going to do a vote, but we would do like a consensus if you guys are amenable to that part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, here we go.
For the Arts Council.
Arts Commission, yes.
I'm sorry, Commission. I'm nominating Rebecca Escobedo Guzman for reappointment.
Councilmember Bruner.
Christopher Mosley.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Weston Mossman.
Weston Mossman.
Okay, and then I'll just go through and if you can say aye, that you accept all three, then those will be appointed. Councilmember Trigaro.
Aye.
Councilmember Bruner.
Aye.
Councilmember Newsom.
Aye.
Member Goldar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Aye.
And Mayor Keely.
Aye.
So we have Rebecca Escobedo Guzman, as well as Christopher Mosley and Weston Mossman. So the Board of Building and Fire Appeals, we have two openings. We had one applicant who happened to be, he was interested in reappointment. So if Councilmember Newsom, if you want to make an appointment or if by consensus, everybody wants to reappoint Miles Corcoran.
I'll nominate Miles Corcoran.
By consensus? Any objection? No, Miles Corcoran. The County Latino Affairs Commission, that is not a city commission, just like it says, it is the county, but the city appoints someone to it. Similar to the Board of Building and Fire Appeals, we have one opening, one applicant, if by consensus, that person can be appointed to the county board. Any objection? Emmanuel Navarez will be on the Downtown Commission. We have three openings. Councilmember Bruner, Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson and Councilmember O'Hara's nominations are for this board in that order. So Councilmember Bruner, who would you like to?
Rebecca Acosta.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
William Nor.
And Councilmember O'Hara.
Jessie Bond.
Any objection to these? So we have Rebecca Acosta being reappointed, William Nor and Jessie Bond. The next one is the Equal Employment Opportunity Committee. There are two openings with terms ending January thirty first, twenty twenty nine. These are at-large appointments, so we will go through and anybody can name up to two nominees out of the three applicants. And then we will go through again and vote. If we don't have a consensus on two, the first go around. So Mayor Keely, if you can give me two nominees.
Council, thank you, Madam Clerk, Katie Ferraro and Alfredo Manriquez. Manrique.
Trigaro.
Thank you.
I would promote the same two. Thank you.
Same.
Same.
So by consensus, Katie Ferraro and Alfredo Manriquez on the EEOC. The next one is the Historic Preservation Commission. There are two openings and we have Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson and Councilmember O'Hara making their nominations, starting with Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Donna Ramos.
David. I don't know how to pronounce the last name.
Subox.
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 Subox. Thank you.
Any objection? The next one is the Parks and Rec Commission, two openings. Councilmembers O'Hara and Trigaro's had the nominees. Councilmember O'Hara.
Dan Akrastine.
You can make up to two. But there are two openings. Oh, wait. Oh, no, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Man, yeah. Have at it. Councilmember Trigaro.
Barbara J. Lawrence.
I guess I'm just confused because I was like, I never, I know there's, I only have people on like one or two committees, so I just, I'm confused about this, but okay.
I think some are at large, whereas some are being designated per.
I do have issues. They're not going to be solved right now. Move on.
I can, we can.
Move on.
Renee, I can, or Councilmember, I can talk to you.
Can you talk to her, please?
The Planning Commission, there are two openings for Councilmember Trigaro and Councilmember Bruner's appointments. Councilmember Trigaro.
I'm promoting Carolyn Kelly Book. Or excuse me, Carolyn Book Kelly.
Councilmember Bruner.
Matthew Thompson for reappointment.
Objection? Okay, the Sister Cities Committee, this is two opening with term ending January thirty-first, 2027. This is going to be completing a term of someone who had resigned, that's why it's shorter. And the other term is January thirty-first, 2029. Both are at-large. So we will do the same thing, we'll go around and everybody can make up to two. Councilmember Newsom?
Emily Burton and Catherine Lee.
Councilmember Golda?
Maggie Mathis.
Councilmember O'Hara?
Emily Burton and Maggie Mathis.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Maggie Mathias and Emily Burton.
Mayor Keely?
Emily Burton and Ms. Mathias.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Maggie Mathias and Emily Burton.
Councilmember Brunner?
Leah Khan, Emily Burton.
So because there are two different terms, Maggie Mathias, who had the lesser amount of votes, will have the shorter term. And then Emily, which is January thirty-first, 2027, with the eligible for reappointment. And then Emily Burton has January thirty-first, 2029. Up next, Transportation and Public Works Commission, there are four openings. We have Councilmember Brunner, Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson and Councilmembers O'Hara and Trigaro. Councilmember Brunner, who would you like to nominate?
Elizabeth Madrigal.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Kyle Kelly for reappointment.
Councilmember O'Hara?
Ron Goodman for reappointment.
And Councilmember Trigaro?
Lola Quiroga for reappointment.
Any objection?
No, I guess I can't object, objection does nothing. No.
City Clerk, there's a question about an objection. What does that do?
We could do a re-vote. Yeah.
But if I object, it doesn't, it just, it doesn't do anything. I mean, I can't, I feel like, I have no say except.
Yeah, it, it could open up a discussion. Basically, these are nominations and council has to approve them.
I don't know if it's worth it. I'm not going to object.
Okay, let's go.
Okay. The Water Commission, three openings, Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson and Councilmembers O'Hara and Trigaro. Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Tom Burns for reappointment.
And Councilmember O'Hara?
David Greenbaskin for reappointment.
And Councilmember Trigaro?
Justin Burks for reappointment.
Any objection? We have Tom Burns, David Greenbaskin and Justin Burks to the Water Commission.
You can make a make.
Process? For future considerations, I think going in the same alphabetical order is probably not advisable because we are likely jockeying for potential options. And if you always go with his first, the same person first. Oh, you didn't?
No, we didn't. No, it was, it's been staggered for the last two years and we did it based on who got to pick the last time. Because you guys are newly elected, you get full terms, you get the, it's the way that the rotation had happened. I guess, yeah.
That, that might be helpful to also hear.
It's in, it's in the packet, it's in the binder. It kind of, it kind of broke it down by the order and it shows the rotation a bit.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor is recognized?
I just wanted to make a general comment. I was really blown away by the applications. Our city clerk mentioned how many exceptional applications we got and I just want to reiterate that there's a lot of talent in this community and I want to thank everybody who applied for your willingness to, you know, sit long hours in, in some of these meetings that meet for long hours and, and support us in our work and support the, you know, the work of the community. So just thank you to all the applicants, thank you to all the existing commissioners and thank you to those who are going to be serving.
Certainly.
Appreciate it. Also, for all of those that apply that are brand new to the process, please don't be discouraged if we reappointed folks, for instance, in the Water Commission and the Transportation and Public Works Commission, having that institutional knowledge, especially in those particular commissions, and I don't remember the Planning Commission if we did, I think we did one reappointment. It's really critical having that institutional knowledge and that longevity of experience, especially with our multi-year CIP, you know, programs and in support, especially in the water departments, our water supply work. So just wanted, please don't be discouraged to continue to apply. I, like the Vice Mayor, was just blown away by the number of applicants, the wealth of experience that folks had, their interest and passion for serving the community. In, I think, two years, the rest of our colleagues will have nominations of which we will be glad to support. So just want to make sure that folks, especially if you're new to this, keep applying and keep coming to meetings and getting involved. Thank you.
Thank you. For the debate issue, Ms. Bush, further action?
No, thank you.
Okay, we have completed this. I believe we have brought ourselves to the end of our agenda. Let me check with Mr. Candati. Do we have further business come before the body? City Clerk, for the business. And I must say that Councilmember Renee Golda will, with great reluctance, move adjournment. And Mr., Mr. Newsom is equally as reluctant to end this soiree, but deep regret, it is not debatable sadly, and those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Really? Motion passes, we are adjourned.